July 8th, I'd like to call the city commission meeting to order. Before we begin, much like the budget workshop today, I have a statement to read into the record. On March 20th, 2020, the governor Ron DeSantis issued executive order 20-69, as extended by subsequent executive orders authorizing local governments due to the COVID-19 state of emergency to hold public meetings using communications media technology and without the physical presence of a quorum until the expiration of the state of emergency. The state of emergency was declared in executive order 20-52 and declared locally by Leon County pursuant to Leon County proclamation 2020-6, as has been amended and extended. The governor on June 23rd, 2020, extended executive order 20-69 until August 1st, 2020. This order may be further extended due to changing health metrics. Metrics. Additionally, the city commission took action on April 8th, 2020 to permit the use of communication media technology until the expiration of executive order 20-69. Therefore, although the current city commission meeting was initially noticed to take place in the city hall commission chambers, the meeting was renoticed on July 2nd, 2020 due to the Leon County's COVID-19 positivity metrics to occur virtually with the opportunity for the public to participate virtually. Future city commission meetings and other city public meetings, including meetings of quasi judicial boards and advisory committees, may continue to meet using communications media technology and without the physical presence of a quorum as authorized by executive order 20-69 until its expiration or other action of this city commission. Thanks for taking time to let me read that into the record. Before we begin, I would like to call on Commissioner Curtis Richardson to provide us with the invocation and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Richardson.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would all bow your heads, please. Dear heavenly Father, we come together again, once again, to do the business of our city. Dear heavenly Father, we ask that you would continue to bless and keep us. God, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beauty of your creation. We thank you for the sunshine and the rain. Dear heavenly Father, we ask that you would be a part of this meeting. We invoke your presence, God, so that all of the decisions that we make here today, we know that you are a part of that. We ask you for wisdom and discernment as we make decisions that will impact the future of our city, our residents, our guests. And dear Father, we ask that you would continue to bless this community. Bless us and keep us healthy and safe and strong, dear heavenly Father, because we know what we're dealing with now on a worldwide basis, only you can create, can correct, and we ask your blessings in that regard. God, we ask your blessings upon all that are a part of this meeting this afternoon and those that are watching from the public. We hope that we will make decisions that are pleasing in your sight, and as we ask this blessing in your son, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Curtis, thank you. Mr. Manager, do we have any agenda modifications today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do. Item 807 on your original agenda has been deleted. That item was the approval of the award of cutting edge of water well services IFB number 050-20-RK. Also, item 1203 has been rescheduled. That item is an update on the midtown working group. That is being rescheduled in coordination with the citizens' working group that has been engaged on that matter. It will be brought at a later date. Those are the modifications, sir.
Excellent. Any questions for the city manager? See, none. Thank you. We'll move on. Okay, so colleagues, this is a new one. We have one presentation to make, and let's face it, we always celebrate Pride Month in June. Usually, there are many festivals and opportunities for us to meet in person, and it's always tradition that we provide a proclamation to show our support. Unfortunately, we cannot meet in person. So what I would like to do, I do have the proclamation with me. It is dated June 17th, when we first drafted it, but if you will bear with me, I would love to read it into the record. "From the governing body of the city of Tallahassee, a proclamation. Whereas a central tenet of the United States law is the principle of non-discrimination and equal protection under the law as human rights, and whereas members of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBT communities still face ongoing discrimination based on their innate status, resulting in untalied human tragedy, loss of life, loss of life, community isolation, and abuse, and whereas the city of Tallahassee opposes any type of oppression, be it based on race, gender, or sexual orientation, and is committed to justice and equality for all individuals, and whereas the city of Tallahassee has long strived for equal rights for all citizens and maintains a strong stand that each individual deserves to be treated equally and with respect, no matter what their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, creed, ethnic origin, or religion may be. And whereas in 2009, the Tallahassee City Commission unanimously voted to change its employee benefits policy to include same-sex and domestic partnerships, and whereas in 2020, I, Mayor Daley, created the city's first LGBTQ-plus advisory council to promote inclusiveness in the Tallahassee area. Now therefore, I, John Daley, by the authority vested in me as mayor, and I join my colleagues on the Tallahassee City Commission, do hereby proclaim June 2020 as Pride Month to honor freedom from prejudice and bias in any form, and in recognition and praise of those members of our community who constantly fight the battle for equal treatment for all citizens, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, creed, ethnic origin, or religion, and further restate the city of Tallahassee's commitment to remain adamantly opposed to all forms of discrimination and oppression." It was signed on June 17th of 2020 by me, the mayor, but I know that each and every one of you on the commission joined me in celebrating June as Pride Month. Mayor Pro Tem, I will open it up first to you for comments, and of course, anyone that would like to join in, we would love to have your comment. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to just pile on how we are happy to recognize all of our constituents who classify themselves as LGBTQ A+. I got to make sure I get all those letters in, and just know that we value you and we value the contributions that you've made to society and the contribution you've made here to our community. We look forward to continuing to work with you to move Tallahassee forward. Happy Pride Month. Sorry, we couldn't do it in person, but nevertheless, our hearts are with you.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Glad we're able to get this proclamation in. There hasn't been a whole lot of celebration in anybody's lives the last few months, so we recognize obviously the importance of it, and I'm glad, even if it's digitally, we made time to recognize and celebrate it.
Agreed. Thank you. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes, let me add to that. I certainly join my colleagues in recognition of Pride Month. I am hopeful that by next year this time, we can in fact all be together. So congratulations and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson? I believe you're muted, Commissioner Richardson.
Yeah. I would first of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing forth this proclamation recognizing Pride Month and for the work that you have done putting together our advisory committee to give us input on those issues that are important to our LGBTQ community here in Tallahassee. One of the things that we are certainly proud of in the city of Tallahassee is our inclusiveness and the richness of the diversity that we have here in our community. Pride Month certainly is one way we're able to recognize the contributions and sacrifices of those in the LGBTQ community, and so I'm pleased, I wish we could be out in Playman Plaza celebrating, but short of that, we certainly want to let our LGBTQ community know that we are proud of them and stand with them in their struggle for equality and equal rights.
Thank you. Certainly do appreciate it. All right, so colleagues, we've got a full agenda tonight, and we have a public hearing at 5 o'clock. My goal is for us to get through all of the regular business of the city commission prior to the public hearing, but we will take as much time as we need on every issue, and if we need to come back after the public hearing to finish the meeting, we will do so. So we'll make sure we spend as much time as we need, but I'm going to keep us on track and keep us moving forward. With that, Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements before the city commission tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Do we have any appearances by other governmental entities?
No, sir, we do not.
We are on the consent agenda. Has any items on the consent agenda been pulled?
No items have been pulled. For clarity, again, I mentioned earlier, item 8.07 has been deleted.
Okay. No items have been pulled.
Move acceptance, second.
Been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem and seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor signify by, excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on the consent agenda?
We do not have any comment on consent.
I apologize. I was moving a little fast for myself there. Okay, we have a motion by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. We are on city commission 9.03. I am going to turn this over to Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, oftentimes on advisory boards, I do take the lead. However, in this case, since we've reconstituted the airport advisory board, I believe David Pollard is going to introduce this item and provide any color or responses to questions you may have.
Wonderful. Mr. Pollard, good to see you, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you may recall, on January 29th of this year, we requested to resize the airport advisory committee and also revisit the function and the bylaws of the committee. With that said, commission did approve it, and we've been working hard. We revised the bylaws, which became effective April 1st, and we've now worked with the Treasury Clerk's Office and have received all the names, one from each commissioner and the mayor, and then four other additional appointees. Each commission appointee will be for a four-year term, eligible for a three-year second term, and the remaining four are for a three-year term and eligible for a second three-year term. We're working to streamline the committee's function on airport strategic goals and priorities and support our strategic priorities that are contained in the city's strategic plan. So with that, sir, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this, Mr. Clerk? That was a no?
No.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. We'll open it up for discussion. Colleagues, motion, discussion?
I'll move staff recommendation, please.
It's been properly moved by Dr. Bryant. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. 9.02, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to offer a brief introduction, and I'm also joined by Ashley Edwards, our Parks and Recreation Director, that can share information regarding this. But over the last several weeks and frankly over many months, there has been some discussion in the community about the possibility of renaming Chapman Pond, that's in our Myers Park neighborhood, in renaming it in honor of Dr. Charles Evans. Again, several of you have brought this to my attention, and we've added it to the agenda for your consideration. Again, the pond is in our Myers Park neighborhood. It is named after a former Supreme Court Justice, Mr. Chapman, and there has been much discussion about the potential to rename it in honor of Mr. Evans. That's been accompanied by letters of recommendation from many in our community. In particular, Dr. Robinson with FAMU, I think, has made that direct recommendation to many of you, if not all of you. So we have added this with a good description of the pond and the legacy of Dr. Charles Evans for your consideration. If you accept staff's recommendation, which is option one, to rename Chapman Pond in honor of Dr. Charles Evans, that will be the final step in the process, and staff will immediately begin the renaming and signing signage process. So that's the recommendation before you. Ashley, I'm sure I've left some things out, but I think I've framed that issue generally. I'll ask you to add any additional thoughts you might have.
Thank you, Reece. I just wanted to take a moment, if I could, just to mention and reiterate that we did receive and are attached to this item 25 letters of support, and I just wanted to briefly mention for the record here, some of Dr. Evans' accomplishments. He was a veteran civil rights leader, distinguished educator, a humanitarian, and a community activist. From his time in high school when he was growing up in Durham, North Carolina, to his time at North Carolina A&amp;T State University, he was very active in the civil rights movement. He served in the Navy and then got his MBA and PhD from Syracuse University, and shortly thereafter joined the faculty of the School of Business and Industry at FAMU in 1982. He served as a full professor and associate dean for over 32 years, and during this time, his family, he and his family moved to the Myers Park neighborhood, and they were among the first African-American families in that neighborhood. He was obviously very active in our local community, most notably serving as president of the Tallahassee branch of the NAACP for 14 years. His tenure was second only to Reverend C.K. Spiel in length as the longest-serving president. He obviously advocated for many causes in our community, including, he was a strong proponent of the hiring of the city's first African-American city manager and first African-American police chief in 1997, and he served on a number of boards and committees throughout the community, working to ensure fairness, equity, and justice for all. And again, Dr. Evans was certainly a notable figure. We certainly recommend this renaming. He passed away in 2013. His family, his wife still lives in their home that is actually right across the street from this pond, so very fitting, very fitting location to be named after him.
All right, Jim, we'll go to public comment, and especially if you have anyone that is that is going to participate live. I'll let you go ahead and queue it up. While you're doing that, let me first say, Ashley, certainly do appreciate your involvement. Let me be very clear, and I think I speak for the commission, while this item came from us, so it's been at the commission level, we do recognize all of the great work of the Citizens Advisory Committee for Parks and Recreation. We do realize that the normal process, you know, if a citizen wanted to have something named, it would go through that process, and by no means are we with our decision tonight, and I'm assuming that's going to go through, by no means do we mean any disrespect to the Citizens Advisory Committee, and we really do appreciate all their hard work. It just, you know, this was, this was, this was brought by commissioners, and so it's been at this level, and I think you understand, but please pass along how much we do appreciate what the Citizens Advisory Committee does for us.
Colonel, Mr. Mayor, I'll be glad to share that with them.
Great. All right, Jim, I'm going to turn it over to you to run the public hearing aspect of the public participation aspect of this item.
Very good. Thank you, Mayor. First thing I'll point out, we do have, we did receive written comment on this item. We also had speakers register and sign up. I want to take first a minute. Harold Lane is administering some of this technology for us on the WebEx end, and my understanding is we have a couple of people who have called in but had not yet been identified, so if we can just sit tight for a minute, give him a minute to do that, we may hear some conversation as he identifies those, but I want to be sure that they're brought in in case this is the item that they had indicated they wanted to speak on. Harold?
Thank you, Jim. Call in user number 10, can you please state your first and last name for me? Call in user number 10, can you please state your first and last name for me?
With a recommendation of how we could further...
That's them talking, so let's go to 12. Call in user number 12, can you please state your first and last name for me? Jim, I'm not hearing a reply from those three callers, so I'm going to mute their microphones back, and we'll proceed as planned, okay?
Okay, very good. We did receive Mayor and Commissioners four written comments. Those were distributed to you. They also were posted to the agenda in advance of the meeting, so if the public wants to see those, they're there. They will become part of the official record of this meeting. Those four comments, three were in support of the item. The fourth was not opposed to the item, but was more of a general comment on the nature of naming facilities and properties. So consistent with the letters that were attached, we had support for this. There were two individuals who signed up to speak on this, and I'm going to take a chance here, because I think I heard just a minute of caller number 10. Caller number 10, I believe, is Stanley Sims, and I know Mr. Sims had registered to speak on this item. So if caller number 10, Stanley Sims, would like to speak, Harold will unmute that microphone. As we normally do in our city commission meetings, each speaker will have three minutes, but most of the people I think who are commenting tonight are familiar with our process, want to be sure they realize the nature of this meeting is such that we don't have a timer that we're all looking at, so I will let you know when there are 30 seconds remaining, and then I will let you know when your three minutes are up. And at that point, the moderator will mute your microphone, so be sure when you hear 30 seconds remaining that you wrap up your comments for the good of the order. So with that, caller number 10, which I believe is Stanley Sims.
Caller number 10, your microphone is unmuted. Jim, I'm going to try the next mic here to make sure. Call in user number 11. Is it Stanley Sims, please speak at this time if it is? And Jim, let me do call in number 12. Is this caller number 12, is this Stanley Sims? If so, it's your opportunity to speak on the agenda item. Okay, Jim. Stanley is present.
The only other individual registered on this item who asked to speak on this is Satya Stark Boehner. Satya Stark Boehner, your three minutes are beginning.
Satya, you can start speaking now.
Mayor not hearing, hearing those who registered speak up at the, at the time they were called, I believe we can go ahead with the item. Again, we had the written comment that was supportive, and we had two individuals sign up to speak, but they did not respond at the time we're called, so we will move on. Those two same individuals did sign up on 9:03, so if they are currently calibrating and making sure they're at their, at their, their phone or their device, they'll have a minute to do that before we get to 9:03.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right, let's open it up for discussion amongst Commissioners. Let me recognize Commissioner Curtis Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say personally that had it not been for the efforts of Dr. Charles Evans and Anita Davis at the time, who were both very active and officers with the NAACP, my political career would not have started where it did. In 1988, I ran for the Leon County School Board when there were no African-American members of that board, because we were electing members through an at-large election system. We had, the NAACP had just been successful in suing Leon County to go to single-member districts for that very reason. It was difficult at the time for an African-American to be elected to that body, and subsequently, after my loss in 1988, the NAACP approached the Leon County School Board, and rather than go through a lengthy litigation process, asked them to voluntarily change their method of electing members from at-large to single-member districts, which they did, and in 1990, I was elected as the first African-American male to the Leon County School Board. And so I certainly want to thank Dr. Evans or his efforts in that regard, because I probably wouldn't be sitting here today with you all had that not been the case back then. The Evans family have been personal friends of ours. They're a part of our church family at Bethel AME Church here in Tallahassee, and so it is an absolute pleasure for me to support the renaming of Chapman Park or Chapman Pond for Dr. Charles Evans, so that his name will be a part of this community in perpetuity in the Myers Park neighborhood. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we rename Chapman Park or Chapman Pond to Dr. Charles Evans Pond in memory of our brother, Dr. Charles Evans, and all that he contributed to this community in improving the quality of life, not only for African-Americans here in the city of Tallahassee, but all who called Tallahassee home. And I think it's just a fitting tribute to his lasting memory.
And I will second your motion as well. Thank you for that wonderful motion. We'll just go straight down the line. The Mayor Pro Tem, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to pile on. As a mentee of Dr. Evans, Dr. Evans and Colonel Barnes, and I were mainstays at the school board meetings, fighting for a new high school on the South Side and other things that came to, came to fruition. So I too am very proud and pleased to pile on and say that this is a noble cause. Unfortunately, we were not able to get it done when he could see it, but I'm sure that his legacy of his children will enjoy, enjoy this, and meaning to come will also enjoy it. When my kids were little, we used to go by there to feed the ducks. Didn't realize the history of that. We were just simply going for the ducks. Well, now I can take my grandchildren by there and say, here is where Dr. Charles Evans' name will be in perpetuity for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Bryant?
Yes, let me pile on also in saying that I had the opportunity to meet Dr. Evans, really when I first came to Tallahassee, and really throughout my early career, it was Dr. Evans that constantly had a voice of encouragement. Now, and I'm sure it was not just for me, but for many others. So I wholeheartedly support the renaming of the pond to the Dr. Charles Evans Pond. I also would like to ask, Mr. Mayor, if we could, this is really for Harold, and we could just follow up with the two people who were trying to speak. Call them or something to make sure it's nothing on our end. This is something new that we're doing.
Wonderful. Thank you for your comments as well. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking forward to supporting this. Thank you, Commissioner Richardson, for your work on this. Thanks to our local historians, Leifry Hollander, Ms. Barnes, and everybody who, don't let us forget, you know, some of these things. Obviously, we don't hold the same values as were held in the 1950s, and some things do need to be changed and, and to, you know, have the community step up and bring it to our contention, and so we can honor people who have served our community, honor them. So I think this is a great step, and I just thank everybody for bringing it to our attention.
Wonderful. See no further comment. All those in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, Jim?
I apologize greatly for my interruption, but I neglected to mention a moment ago that Alan Williams had contacted me and indicated that he had registered to speak on the item. Somehow, it had not been picked up in our system. That's one of those things that we'll work on as we learn what needs to be corrected, but he wanted to be sure that he was on the record registering his strong support of this item, and I did not want Alan Williams to go unrecognized on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by myself, endorsed by all. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 9.03. Item number 9.03, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. At your last City Commission meeting, you asked staff to bring back an item to discuss the Tallahassee Community Remembrance Project's request to place a narrative marker in monument remembering African American victims of Leon County lynchings. The very specific request, and I've had the pleasure of speaking with members of the project that are here with us today, I'd like to introduce them now. Sandra Howard is with us today. I know she's one of the founding members and leaders of this effort that's been underway for more than two years. And I'm, it was my pleasure to speak with her and the team, and she's with us today. Also Reverend Holdcraft, Reverend Holdcraft is with us, and Byron Green. They are members of the group that are referred to as the Tallahassee Community Remembrance Project that's really led the way on this. Very specifically, as I said, what they're seeking to do, they have funding, they have a vision, they have a design. What they're seeking to do is place a couple monuments, a sign marker, and in the future, replica monument like that one found in Montgomery, Alabama, that's at the Equal Justice Initiative site, location. And so really, they do the best justice. They spent so much time and energy in researching this issue, trying to make sure that it is respectful, it's a remembrance. And so we've invited them into the meeting to provide their presentation to you. And I'm not sure who's going to do the main part. I'm going to look to them. Ms. Howard, are you going to take that lead? You're on, there you go.
Yes, sir. Mr. Green and Reverend Holdcraft will, will give our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and I appreciate your work. Let me go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Green and Reverend Holdcraft, and then we can look for a commission discussion. We have put this in a position where you can take action today, and we can provide whatever clarity you need on that action. But it would be the placement, the authority to place these markers, the sign and monument on city property in Cascades Park. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Green for appreciation.
Thank you, Reese. And thank you to the City Commissioners that are here today and the staff that have worked hard to bring this, this initiative to this point. I'm here and I will present a bit of information along with Reverend Tom Holdcraft, and hopefully we can answer any questions that you may have at that point. But as Reese said, the Tallahassee Community Remembrance Project and its supporters are asking for support of this body of City Commissioners to locate a narrative marker along with the duplicate memorial, which is currently housed at the Equal Justice Initiative, to remember the four documented victims of lynching in Leon County on the public right of way near the intersections of East Gates and South Meridian Streets. And for over the past two and a half years, Coalition of 33 Tallahassee community partners from diverse state and civic communities have sought to remember and acknowledge past racial violence and injustices in Tallahassee. Our collective mission here is to bring justice to those members of our society, documented and even those undocumented, who have been systematically mistreated, decreted, traumatized, and even murdered through lynching atrocities. Therefore, we seek to give voice to the voiceless through the acknowledgement of this terrible deed. We found in our research efforts that Florida was the site of at least 331 lynchings between 1877 and 1950. This has been corroborated with the researchers at Equal Justice Initiative over in Montgomery, Alabama. So the four men that we look to honor and acknowledge are Pierce Taylor, a victim in 1897, Mick Morris in 1909, Richard Hawkins in 1937, and Ernest Ponder also in 1937. And historical records confirm that these four men were taken from two Leon County jails near this area and were murdered. Ultimately, we seek to inspire our community, come together for dialogue, education, understanding, action, and ultimately for healing and trust. Tom?
Thank you, Byron. City Commissioners, Managers, Mayor, all of the planning done by Community Remembrance Project, all of the organizing, all of the work is nothing compared to the suffering and the longstanding injustice experienced by these four men Byron mentioned. And be sure there were countless others. As white men took the law into their own oppressive and racist hands, Christ was there weeping at the murders of his own children. So we call for this marker to be in this place where it to be hollow ground, to declare that this will not happen again, and that we can be better from this day and onward. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any questions or comments, we'd love to hear it.
Before we get into commission discussion, Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we do. Not surprisingly, we received more comment on this than any of our other items. Had 32 written comments submitted. Thirty-one of them were supportive. The one that was not was not relevant to the item, and I'll bring, bring that one forward in the unagenda items. But I mentioned it, mentioned it now because this was the item number to which it was attached. So overwhelming written support. In addition, we do have two individuals who wish to speak at this time. And the first of those is Stanley Sims.
Hello?
Mr. Sims, you are recognized.
Hi, Mayor. Mayor, hello?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi.
Mr. Sims, you're recognized to speak.
Okay, do I, okay. Well, this technology is really challenging. First off, Mayor, Commission, I wanted to speak. I apologize for had technical issues on the renaming of the pond, but I think both of these issues are prevalent. I wanted to say, Mayor, I caught a lot of flak because I commended you at the vigil over at Walker Ford when you said black lives matter. And I wanted to take this first public opportunity to say that when you said that black lives matter, it wasn't putting any other lives over anybody else's lives, but it was the matter of fact, you heard the cries of people of color, not only in this nation, but all across, I mean, not only in Tallahassee, but all across this nation. And it made me feel really well to hear our Mayor Pro Tem sit on the steps of a church and say, I am a mother of a black son. It made me feel well to hear our Deputy City Manager say that black lives matter because I have a grandson that's growing up into this community. It's a recognition of our pain. So now that you recognize our pain and you are acknowledging our pain, only thing I'm asking this commission to do is not put a judgment on how we express our pain. Eight minutes and 40 some seconds while an individual laid on that ground and cried out pain that shocked this nation in so many ways. Me being an ex-felon coming out of the Department of Correction, who's had a knee on his neck. Everyone experiences this different. I stood next to that young lady whose life now is gone. The naming of this pond is a great step in the right direction, Mayor. Mr. Evans was not just a citizen of this community, he was a housing officer. He pulled my mom when I was a little boy off the Texas street, living in the projects right over there and made sure that we got into the housing program over in Silver Ridge where I was raised up. He paid my first $3 for a semester fee. They call it Family DRS, but right now, back in my day, they called it Lucian Moten.
You have 30 seconds.
I ask that we not only just rename it, but his family is still given to this community. And there should be a car by the name because that's what his love and his wife, who probably drives, and his children probably drives his cars around this city, that he has helped so many people. Thank you, Mayor, for allowing the citizens of Tallahassee to express that black lives do matter.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Mr. Mayor, we have one other speaker on this item. That is Satya Stark Boehner. Satya Stark Boehner.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you fine. Thank you for, for being here. Sorry, we didn't get you and Mr. Sims on 9.02, but you have three minutes for, for your remarks, and I'll give you a heads up when you're down to 30 seconds.
All right, thank you. I'll do my best to be brief. With, with regards to renaming of places, ponds, parks, stadiums, and the removal of statues associated with glorifying the Confederacy and segregation and bigotry in all forms, I am fully in favor of removal and renaming in honor of those who have done great service to our community. And I also want to encourage the City Commission and the public at large to not be placated simply by gestures of painting streets and renaming things, which are steps in the right direction, but we also need changes to how policing happens in our community, the way policing is incentivized to criminalize lower income and black and brown communities and queer folks. We really need to see some systemic changes, including community control, community having a say in how we are policed, by whom, with what funding, and with what equipment. And that's what I mean when I say community control of police, having a say in how we are policed and by whom. And to that end, I'll go ahead and put my note in for the unagenda moment and say that I am not in favor of a toothless review board regarding police. I am in favor of an all-elected civilian police accountability council. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you very much. Mayor, those were the two people we had who had requested to speak on this item. I've already given you the update on the written comment, which will be part of the record. So with that, I turn it back to you.
Wonderful, thank you. First of all, I want to thank our guests for joining us to walk us through this project. For the record, this isn't just a Tallahassee project. This is a nationwide project that Tallahassee is participating in, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for questions and discussion from City Commission. I know that Mr. Green and his team is here to answer any questions that we may have. I for one will start off by saying I strongly support this initiative. It's personal, my family's been involved with this. I think you all have done a wonderful job over the past two and a half years. My church has been involved as well, and I do look forward to supporting this initiative moving forward. I'm having a hard time seeing hands. We'll just, we'll go down the list. Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank this group for their diligence and their work in bringing this forward and look forward to seeing the culmination of your work. But I, I hope that you won't stop there. I hope that you will continue to remember and that you will continue to join the other historical groups in town to bring about some type of remembrance for the other atrocities that occurred here in our city and the historic nature of our city. There are some things that we have been working on, trying to educate our community to, to our history. One of the things being the Emancipation Day is something that we've been, we've been working on because there seems to be some confusion about Emancipation Day of May 20 in Florida and Juneteenth in Texas. And we all know that even though both of those days occurred, slaves were not freed on June 19th. They were still slaves, slaves were still being held. It was the 13th Amendment that freed slaves if they were not criminals. So don't forget, don't forget that little piece because that piece is what has us with mass incarcerations and so many blacks being in jail right now. They're not dragging them out to hang them, they're hanging them inside. So I, I hope you will continue your work. I am a part of some groups that are doing this work to educate our community and to commemorate and recognize this work. I hope that you will join us because obviously you know what you're doing, they know what they're doing, and together we can make this happen. And this time, this is, this is the right time to make this happen while the whole world is now standing and watching and seeing what we do. As Mr. Sims mentioned, eight minutes and 46 seconds is an awful long time to take someone's life. But when you put a rope around someone's neck, they didn't set a clock. In fact, they had a party and, and they hung there until they died, however long it took. What a horrible way to die. But now our people are dying. They have, they have a noose around their neck, it's invisible, but they're dying from hunger, they're dying for homelessness, they're dying for lack of healthcare. So I'm hoping that with this remembrance, it would be one that is not just a statue or not just a, a structure, but it will be a part of what we do working together to make Tallahassee a better place for everyone. So thank you again for your work. I agree with, with the mayor, I support it. My church is also involved, and I know that many other churches are involved, and we thank you for your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Richardson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank the group, Ken Austin, who's a member of Bethel AME Church here in Tallahassee, has also been a part of this group and has been the one that's been contacting me about the progress of this initiative and the proposed marker. And I first heard about this through the project in Montgomery, Alabama. And then, of course, recently started hearing about local cities around the nation adopting this type of project as well. And I'm glad to see that Tallahassee is at the forefront of that. This is another aspect of African American history that we can add. It's an unfortunate aspect of African American history, but it's another that we can add to our collection of remembrances here. The Riley House and the Barber Shop and Smoky Hollow and all of the other aspects, the museum at Florida A&amp;M University, all of the other aspects of African American history that we are compiling here in Tallahassee and Leon County so that our children will know some aspects of their history that are not taught in the public schools and that others will know what African Americans have contributed through the years, have sacrificed and contributed through the years to make America be the great country that she is, Florida, the great country that she is, and certainly our hometown of Tallahassee be the great city that she is because of those sacrifices and contributions. And I understand that it will be in the general vicinity of another historical marker that, that North American properties will have in the Cascades Park area, as well as Smoky Hollow and some of the other African American artifacts that we have in that area of our city around Cascades Park. It will make us, it will begin to make us a destination for people who want to learn about and understand African American history in our local community and in our state. And so I think it's a wonderful project, and I look forward to its conclusion when we actually not only have the marker, but the we actually not only have the marker, but the the actual artifact that we can place here in our city as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Bryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me join my colleagues, first of all, in support of the project. I will say that it has a good title in in a remembrance because I too join Commissioner Williams Cox that as we remember what was done, that we in fact acknowledge and recognize that it is still being done today, but in a very different form. And it should place in all of our hearts a call to action, a call to collaborative action, which is really represented by the the group that came together to respond to this. So thank you for your efforts, and I I won't belabor the point, I do support the motion.
Commissioner Matlow.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Bryan, I think I think you guys summed it up nicely, so I'll just dito your remarks. Thank you, Mr. Green, and Ms. Howard, Mr. Holcapp for bringing this forward. You know, we appreciate the community support and collaboration to get to get things like this done. So I look forward to supporting the motion, Howard, and to be impressed.
Wonderful. Let me see if I can put us in proper posture, and I'm looking to the city manager and city attorney to help me here. The proper posture would be a motion for approval of placing not only the narrative marker, but eventually the memorial itself on pub on public property down at Cascades Park, basically at the corner of East Gaines and South Meridian Street. Is that appropriate, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, that's that's exactly right.
All right, do we cross all the legal Ts and dot the Is on that motion, Madam Attorney?
That is correct.
Okay, is there anyone that would like to sponsor the motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson, I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Again, I want to thank our friends for joining us with the presentation this evening, and we look forward to moving forward.
All right, we're starting now on eleven point oh one, the introduction of ordinance. I'm going to turn it over to the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eleven point zero one, introduction of ordinance number twenty dash oh dash twenty four, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Tallahassee, amending section two dash three five seven of the Code of General Ordinances relating to competitive bidding, repealing section two dash three five eight of the Code of General Ordinances relating to penalties, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September ninth, twenty twenty. Let the record reflect that the ordinance has been introduced.
Thank you. No action is needed on this. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we did not receive any written comment. We do have one citizen wishing to speak on the item, that is Max Epstein.
Okay, thank you.
As with our earlier items, Mr. Epstein will have thirty minutes for remarks. I think I hear an attempt to connect.
Okay.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Epstein, you are recognized.
Okay, I actually, this is supposed to be for eleven oh three, the stormwater ordinance.
Okay, we will. Thank you for that. I will be sure that we call you on eleven oh three. Thank you for letting us know. Mr. Mayor, that means no additional comments on on this item.
Great. Colleagues, there's no item, no action that needs to be taken, but are there any questions for the city attorney on this item? Seeing none, we're on eleven point oh two, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number eleven point zero two, introduction of ordinance number twenty dash oh dash twenty five, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, City Commission, amending chapter twenty one, article eleven of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, by deleting section twenty one dash four nine two entitled Burning Permits, amending chapter ten, article one of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, to create section ten dash two entitled Burn Permits, providing for conflicts, separability, and an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September ninth, twenty twenty. Let the ordinance, let the record reflect that the ordinance has been introduced.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Once again, we don't have any action that needs to be taken on this. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No written comment, no speakers.
Excellent. Colleagues, does anybody have a question on this item? Great, seeing none, we'll go to eleven point oh three, Madam Attorney.
Item number eleven point zero three, introduction of ordinance number twenty dash oh dash twenty six, an ordinance amending sections twenty one dash three four six, twenty one dash three five four, and twenty one dash three seven six, Code of General Ordinances of the City of Tallahassee relating to discharges to the wastewater system and pretreatment, amending section twenty one dash five three seven, Code of General Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee relating to stormwater management systems, providing for conflict, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for September ninth, twenty twenty. Let the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
There's no action that's required on this item. However, Mr. Clerk, we have at least one public speaker, any written comment as well?
Mr. Mayor, our speaker, Mr. Epstein, had submitted some written comments. I'll recognize him now so that he can make his remarks, and the ones that he submitted in writing will be part of the record.
Oh, Commissioners. Thank you. I'd like to thank you for this ordinance. It's a step in the right direction, but we need to now fix the problems. If you see this ordinance deals with stormwater facilities that are in park-like settings, we have many of them, Cascades Park, San Luis Park in my backyard, and these are stormwater facilities. They have toxins, pesticides, oils, herbicides, fecal matter, all sorts of other things that then feed these algae blooms that we're seeing all across the city and the state. So I'd really like to see the commission take it on to clean up these facilities, test them regularly. For example, I have two friends that have had dogs die, pets die from interacting with stormwater, one in Cascade Park and one on Lake Mafiaet. This is a major problem. And if you remember, I submitted some test results of the Tallahassee Junction Pond that had these very high levels toxic cyanobacteria. So the city, the county, whoever, really needs to think about whether or not turning these into recreational facilities is the right idea. These are places, basically, it's a landfill for nitrogen, phosphorus, and all of these other hazardous roasts, and these things have to be cleaned regularly. And I wasn't seeing that really in a lot of our facilities. San Luis Park in my backyard, there's a dog park there, and it's full of this algae. And this algae actually gets in the air, people breathe it, it causes Alzheimer's, ALS, liver damage, all sorts of other things. So I would really like to see the city take this on to clean up our system. And there are a lot of things that we can do, advanced designs, aquaculture, and I know the city can do it, I need a Favors Plaza is a great example.
You have thirty seconds.
Thank you. We need a fertilizer pesticide ordinances, we need low-impact development, we need to be keeping vegetation where it is when we develop, that way we can treat the water in place instead of clearcutting on Mikasuki Road. All that water ends up in Cascades Park, and it ends up in someone else's backyard. So we, it's also a way for us to save money on taxpayers, tens of millions of dollars down the road, just to update these and move in a positive direction. Thank you.
No additional speakers.
Thank you. This item requires no action. We are now on twelve point oh one. Turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, we've got great optimism for the Purpose Built Communities model, something that we had long hoped could come to Tallahassee. We know that that is happening. You also know that you provided authorization to provide startup funding for the Community Quarterback, which is organized as the South City Foundation. We have one of the the co-chairs with us today. I'm very pleased to recognize Representative Osley. She's going to provide the report. Before we get there, I want to provide an opportunity for Abena Ojatayo to provide some comments. You recall the last time we talked about this, Michael Parker was the director. He's since retired. We wish him well. I hope he's enjoying twenty twenty, and we've we've given the the keys to Abena to continue the forward progress. And I'd like her just to share a few comments and then allow Representative Osley to provide the summary and overview.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Commissioners. It is my pleasure to bring this item to you, knowing that it's been many, many years in the making. You have in front of you the details of a report of just about twelve months, a little over twelve months' worth of work that you initiated through a formal agreement with the South City Foundation. You all may be very familiar with Purpose Built, but it is a national organization that has proven itself to implement very holistic and successful models of community revitalization. The commission reaffirmed their commitment to the South Side by not only identifying in our strategic plan, but creating and formalizing a relationship that allows the city and the county to formally support this neighborhood-level initiative. So you have, part of your package is the details of the work that has been done, but also to highlight the role that this quarterback organization, if you remember that term, is the local agency that will really roll up the sleeves and commit to the long, hard work of of getting this work done. That agency in our community for South Side has been a South City Foundation, which Representative Osley chairs. The agreement we had outlined, a couple milestones and deliverables, and I'm very pleased to say today that the quarterback organization has just been working doubly hard, trying to leverage your initial investment of a hundred thousand dollars to get them started, to bring on multiple partners, and to really engage all these stakeholders in what we hope will be a lifelong commitment and revitalization for the community. So I don't want to steal any of the thunder, you've seen some of the notes already, but I will like to introduce Representative Osley. Again, she serves as the co-chair of the Board of Directors, she's a staunch advocate for this initiative, you know her well, and she will take it from here with a brief summary of the work of the agency.
Thank you so much, Abena, and I'm going to see this.
Good to have you here.
Okay, it worked, yay. So thank you, Abena, and I do want to acknowledge Michael Parker's work on this, and we're thrilled to have Abena as part of our team, as you all know, she brings such great intellect and creativity, so we're excited about that. But I, first of all, I wanted to say thank you, thank you, thank you to the Commissioners for believing in this. Sort of took a little bit of a risk getting out there, but you believed in the vision and, oops, there we go. And, you know, this this holistic vision of transforming this historic South City neighborhood, you know, honoring its history and securing its future. So this is our, this is the vision statement that's been agreed upon and worked on by residents and stakeholders, and we're very excited moving forward. Y'all are very familiar with the three pillars of the Purpose Built model, housing, education, and wellness. You know, it's been years of conversation, and I feel like I've looked at this lot a million times and talked about it in theory, and it's just so almost emotional to see how much progress has been made on these fronts. So I'm going to go quickly, you have a lot of this, all of this information in your packet, but I'm going to hit the highlights. So this, this is a summatary of our partners working across the silos. Many of these are financial supporters, and everyone is, you know, rolling up their sleeves and and working hard to get this done. But I can't really stress enough how important this piece of this project is. This is a resident-owned, community-driven process. Thankfully, we have a grant from the, that's from the Knight Foundation through the Community Foundation that is being led by Christine Henry to really focus on this community engagement piece. These are all boxes again, but they all represent dozens of meetings with stakeholders over the past year. As you can see, business owners, faith-based organizations, youth and school advisory members, all working on on this vision. This is real, authentic community engagement. Again, Christine Henry is is leading this. It's everything from these meetings that we've been holding virtually through COVID to pop-up pancake breakfasts and and a summer break spot, an office, an office that has just opened up at Greater Love right on Orange Avenue. We have also just brought on a Vista volunteer, Clarence Jenkins, who grew up in the South City neighborhood, and he's going to be with us. So we're really, really, really excited. We also have engaged fifteen South City, South Side neighborhoods that are, that will be impacted by this, and they're part of the stakeholder groups as well. You all, I think, are familiar, I'm really blessed to have the co-chair in Ramon Alexander, who's a new father, for those of you who don't know, but a great board of, a working board of our, of, you know, the, the cross-section of our community, and everyone on this that you see here has contributed and invested financially and with a lot of their time to make this effort work. We also have a brand-new board member, Bridget Birmingham, who is a South City resident who who has just joined our board. Advisory Council likewise, very, is subject matter experts that are working very, very busily to make all of these things work. So our executive team, Courtney, Christine, and Holly. So jumping into the housing, y'all are very familiar with what's going on in Orange Avenue, phase one is is slated, and we're working hand-in-hand with the Housing Authority. Columbia Residential, the developer, has, is such a strong partner that they have committed a significant amount of of dollars to to match what you all have put forward as our seed money to to keep this moving, to to support the efforts of the Community Quarterback because they they know with their work in other Purpose Built communities, the value that this brings to their residents. On the education front, Hartsfield is our, is our partner school. We have been, have jumped in full force with an MOU between the Foundation and Hartsfield. There is a new primary IB program that's going to be implemented for the entire elementary school, starting in the, in August. We've been working with them through COVID with making sure that every South City kid has access to the internet through a device as well as connectivity, we're working with the school district on that, and just supporting Hartsfield wherever we can. Also have been working with Fairview and Rickards, and the, we are moving forward with early learning, the the hope for a quality early learning center, hopefully on the Wesson site, lots of conversations going on around that with Design Works at Office of Economic Vitality, and Daryl Parks is going to head up the the effort for the early learning center. Finally, the wellness is, there are ongoing dialogues and and conversations with the stakeholders to to talk about the needs, the assets, map the assets, and we're excited about partnering with the city on the neighborhood-first model. So I I think I've hit most of the highlights. I want to, you know, kind of close by saying it's important to note that this work has always been done through an equity lens. That has been modeled by Purpose Built, which has focused nationally on identifying and dismantling structural racism in all of their communities. It's an essential element of what we're doing and and everything that we're doing at the South City Foundation. So thank you so much for believing in us, and as always, I could talk forever, but I don't, but I'm happy to answer any questions or talk offline with any of you. So thank you so much.
Representative, thank you. Abena?
That's it. If that wasn't enough, I'm happy to answer any questions, they've been working hard, there's much more work to do, but we're very pleased and we're looking forward to what comes of it.
Excellent. City Manager?
Good. I think it was a great job by Representative Osley.
Excellent. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have no written comment. We do have one speaker, that speaker is Stanley Sims, and he will be recognized again for this item for three minutes. Mr. Sims, the connection is good, you may begin.
Good evening again, Commissioners and Mayor. I just wanted to also say kudos to all, to Representative Osley, who has not looked at this project from thirty-eight thousand square feet in the air, but who has been on the ground and, you know, managing it, and hats off to her and her team. There's also one- There's also one other person that I think is an unsung hero in this, and that's Ms. Brenda Williams, who have really was a forefront soldier who went in and educated those residents, directed them and showed them, addressed their concerns. And so I am just so excited about this. There's, I know she says a three-legged prong, but I think that we also, especially with COVID-19, there needs to be a job entrepreneurship project in there. And Purpose Built does have that. I've been doing some research on it as the executive director of our new organization called Help, Helping Entrepreneurs Leverage Prosperity. We've met with Representative Ozley, and we've also met with Ms. Brenda Williams and, and talking about possible partnerships. And so we are excited about this project. The community is excited about this project. And I, I do also want to say kudos to Ms. Christique Henry, who have been out there serving those pancakes and talking to individuals, hula hoop contests, the engagement about those neighbors over there. Even when I talk to them, yeah, I heard about it. Yeah, the word is getting out. I, I wanted to just say thank you for all of the work that you all have done. Thank you again, Representative Ozley, for being on the forefront for Florida, also recognizing that our, our current challenges in our community. And this is one of those things about housing that is going to address our public safety issues as well as the gap in our economic wealth. And until we can get control of more of the resources here.
You have 30 seconds.
And I guess in my closing, I'll just say it like this. You know, my good friend Curtis says, "I built my house on the South Side." But we now need to get these people out of these houses and get them into some houses like yours. So I built my, send my children to the schools on the South Side. Now we finna have some schools that's going to reflect that how your daughters are doing awesome and, and they're growing up. Our kids of these communities are going to do awesome. That's what I sacrifice for in the South Side.
You have three minutes.
That's the J. Gates that I grew up in. Thank you, Representative Ozley. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, Ms. Brenda Williams. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cook, do we have any other public comment?
No, sir.
The action force is to simply accept the report. Now, is there any questions for Representative Ozley? Abena?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I didn't have a question, just a quick comment. I wanted to make sure everybody knew too that our Community Redevelopment Agency, our CRA, has been a partner in this as well. One of the first things that I did as a newly-elected city commissioner was work to get the boundaries of the CRA extended to the South City area. Our original boundary lines did not include South City, but I saw the necessity for that kind of investment in the South City area as well. And so what has come of that is the CRA pledged, I want to say, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was 1.3 million for housing redevelopment in the Orange Avenue apartments. And they were able to leverage that 1.3 million to get, I think it was 2.3, or 23 million from the Florida Housing Finance Authority for Phase One of the redevelopment of the Orange Avenue apartments. And so the CRA has played, I think, a very important role in this. And I think they will be coming back to us for another commitment of funds as they continue through the various phases of redevelopment of this project. In the end, it will be mixed-use housing. They will replace every one of the low-income apartments that exists now. And in addition to that, there will be market-rate housing built in the area as well. And all of those residents who are there now, it is my understanding, will be given a Section Eight housing voucher. They can take that and go anywhere in the country that they choose to live where there is house, Section Eight housing available, and they will have first right of refusal for coming back to this development once it's completed. And so I just wanted to make sure that, that the CRA, in its very important role, was recognized for the part that that agency has played in advancing this Purpose Built community on the South Side of Tallahassee.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other comments? Commissioner Richardson, will you make the motion to accept the report?
I would make the motion that we accept the report, Mr. Mayor.
Signed it by Commissioner Bryant. No further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Thank you. 12.02, Mr. City Manager. And Representative Ozley, thank you for joining us again. Certainly appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 1202 is a status of the State of the Southern Strategy Report. The COT Plan calls for an update every three years, triannually, for the Southern Strategy area. The Southern Strategy area is in the southern portion of our community. It's bounded to the west and south largely by Capital Circle Southwest and, and parts north of that. We wanted to bring you an item to make sure this was discussed as we compared the report, get confirmation of a number of focus areas that we believe should be included in the report. And we've got Wayne Tetter, our Assistant City Manager, who's intimately familiar with this, as well as our Planning Director, Cherie Bryan. I'd like them to provide a quick overview. And again, we're asking for your direction, and it is the recommended action to, to support numerous focus areas that we think are critical for the ultimate production of the report. With that, I'm going to ask Assistant City Manager Wayne Tetter to provide some comments.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Back in 1998, the City and County Commission adopted a number of goals, objectives, and policies in our comprehensive plan to deal with the Southern Strategy area that Reese, the City Manager identified. The primary goal and primary purpose of those goals, objectives, and policies was to increase growth and development in the South Side of our community. And more or less, the policies were intended to balance out the growth that we've had across our community. For example, there's been longstanding growth that has really taken off in the northeast part of our community. And so, and, and still today, that growth is still relevant, and it's kind of competing with the rest of our community. So these goals, objectives, and policies were put into place to try to shift that balance of growth and to basically create equal opportunities for growth and development across our entire community, in particular, the southern part of, of Tallahassee. While there's been a, a number of things that the city and the county have done over time to try to create significant investment in the Southern Strategy area, we all know that there's more that needs to be done in the Southern Strategy area. So we, based on the fact that we haven't seen exactly all what was intended under, under the original comprehensive plan policies, what we thought we would do is take a little different approach on this triennial report that Reese mentioned, which is required by the comprehensive plan. In the past, we've simply identified the goal, the things that have happened over time, and just gave you a, basically a data dump. But this year, what we thought we'd do is do a little bit different approach, where we take a look at all the critical factors necessary that we think that could better activate the Southern Strategy areas. So before we got too far into our report, we wanted to check in with you, make sure that you're seeing what we think might be what we need to focus on on this report, have feedback from you. If we're not hitting the, the mark, we're not addressing the issues that you want us to address, we want you to give us that direction today so that we can focus on those things that we need to include in the report. Cherie will kind of very briefly walk through those items before you. So I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to her, and we will both be able to address your questions after, at the conclusion of her presentation.
Thank you, Wayne. Just pulling the presentation up now. Okay. Appears that it's up. Again, thank you. That was a great introduction from Wayne. He, he gave us a, a good overview. Just to start off, I wanted to, I wanted to remind everyone of the, the language in Goal 11, which is to encourage quality land development, which results in population growth in the southern part of the community, and also retain and increase employment opportunities as well as an income mix. And the key, the key statement at the end is comparable to the remainder of the urbanized county, which is what Wayne just pointed out. What, the, the area is highlighted here, and in, um, these areas in blue are those that are in the city limits, and those that are in the light gray are in, are, are an unincorporated area. So I wanted to just point out that there, there's a mix of city and county within this boundary. The, um, the over, the, the update will include just quickly some higher points of the, of the, of the update that'll be coming forward towards you, towards the end of the summer. It'll, we'll talk about the origin of the Southern Strategy. I wanted to highlight that we'll be hitting, reviewing all the planning areas, such as the Promazon, the CRA, and those things that have overlapping policy guidance so that we can get to those specific strategic points that Wayne talked about. We'll be looking at the, the goals and objectives of the COT Plan and, as well as the sector plans and their boundaries. And the, I'll show you on this following slide. These are the sector plans and the relevant neighborhood planning efforts that have occurred in the Southern Strategy over the course of the past 20 years, 15 to 20 years, really. And we'll be looking at all of those in detail during this, this report. But at this point, I just wanted to show you the, how they break out over the, over the area. We'll bring back the plan to, the update, excuse me, to the local planning agency in September for their review and their recommendations. And then we are planning to bring the formal update to the City Commission in October. And finally, to hit on what Wayne was, the main point of what Wayne mentioned earlier, he, these are the proposed focus areas, and this is the, the last slide that I, I wanted to share with you today. I want to leave it here so that we can, we want to, to have feedback on, if you feel like we've hit the mark on listing these trends, if there's anything in particular you'd like us to dive into regarding these, and, or if there's anything in addition. So quickly, we'd look at the housing trends over the course of the past 20 years, and further back than that, actually, as well as the infrastructure projects that have occurred in the past as well as planned ones, public and private development trends, as well as those housing trends, because there's been a fair amount of, of commercial development as well. And we'll look at those in light of the incentives in the past to the, to promote growth and how they've worked, and if, if there's call for new recommendations for some new incentives. Infrastructure's an important piece, especially water and sewer. We're looking at the needs there as far as the impediments. And then identify any other constraints that may be limiting growth and redevelopment. And then finally, we'll be analyzing those existing comprehensive, excuse me, comprehensive plan policies and objectives, and identify any changes that may need to be put in place to those policies in order to further the overall goals of the Southern Strategy. So with that, though, that's some, that's all I wanted to share, but I wanted to open the floor at this point, based on these trends, these focus areas, to see what the feedback from, from the Commissioner might be.
Great. Thank you, Cherie. Certainly do appreciate it. Before we get started with commission discussion, do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we have no written comment and no speakers on this item.
All right, let's move forward, open it up the floor for any comments from the Commission.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Pro Tim, and then I think I see Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Richardson, Commissioner Malloy. We'll just go down the line. How about that? Mayor Pro Tim?
Okay, Cherie, can you start sharing your screen unless, thank you. I need to see people.
Understood.
Thank you. And thank you for that, 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 that presentation. I, I'm, I'm not telling, don't want to tell tales out of school, but I will tell you that Wayne gave me a very thorough tour of the Southern Strategy and, and the sector plans. We actually went down and we drove the, we drove the land, and there is lots of things going on. You know, people say they don't see things happening, they don't see it when they drive through the South Side. There are lots of things that are going on that you can't see in a drive-through. You have to have some time and have somebody who can show you what you're looking at. And so I appreciate Wayne for doing that. And this, this started because of a conversation I had with him about where was the, the Urban Services area? Where's that land down on the South Side? And so I, I got some history from him and from some others who've been around a lot longer than me to find that the Urban Services area, that line got, it, it, it got moved back in or it didn't move. Something, something happened on a previous, long time ago, commission. And so now here we are, and I am of the opinion that we need to move the Urban Services area line as far south as we can, because there are some benefits that the people down, down on the far south are not getting because they are not a part of, they're not in the city limits. Sidewalks, lights, ditch prep. And in some of the areas we saw, those things were, so those things were like that. So I would want us to, as we're looking at this, Cherie and Wayne and Reese, and as we look at this, let's look at what we, what's the process? What do we need to do to reimagine the South Side, including the fairground? Because that's a whole heap of land just sitting there. Gun shows, car shows, used car sales, rave shows. And if you want to have an event there, you, you have to rent, rent it. And then, as Commissioner Parker said, if you need to go to the bathroom while you're there, you got to go outside to another building to go to the bathroom in 2020. So I, I, where, where my mind is now is that it is time for the South Side to rise. And in order for that to happen, we have got to make sure that these, these sector plans and these other projects and things that are occurring down here, that they connect in a way comprehensively that we can be able to explain it, be able to show it, and be able to extend the city limits as far as we possibly can with the, with the, the gateways that are going to be coming in and the outbuild of the airport and all that. We need to make sure that when people come into the city of Tallahassee, no matter where they come, what if they decide not to take the gateway? What if they decide to take another road? They miss a road. We need to make sure that all of the city at, at, at those southern entry points are ready for people to come and, and enjoy our city. And we, we need to make sure that the economic mix that you mentioned, the workforce and the, the opportunities for jobs also occur down, down. I, I say down here on the South Side, because I live on the South Side, you know. Commissioner Richardson and I, we could, we could walk and meet each other on the sidewalk. We're not going to do that. But I'm just saying, we are seeing growth in other parts of the city. It's now time to pay attention to, to the growth that's needed on the South Side. And I, I'm not saying that attention has not been, been paid, but it's now time to pick it up, to, to, to step it up. As you're going to hear from Kimball Thomas to talk about tempo, we need to, we need, we need a, a greater tempo, a greater cadence to make the South Side expand it so that we can provide some of these services to our residents that they so, so need and, and deserve so that their neighborhoods or our neighborhoods will look like neighborhoods in other places. So Wayne, you know, you, you know what our conversation has been. Reese, you know what our conversation has been, and the city attorney, and, and anybody who will listen. Y'all know what, what I've been saying. So, so what, what, what do we need to do? What, what would it take to make this move forward?
Mr. Tetter, comment?
So the, the areas that we're looking at, I think, provide an excellent opportunity to overview. Quite frankly, we, we want to look at the boundary of the Southern Strategy area. There are some areas that maybe should not be included, maybe some areas that should be included. When we talk about incentives... When we talk about incentives or how we grow in the community, years ago, we actually waived one of the most difficult topics that we've had in our community, our concurrent traffic concurrency. It would cost developers a lot of money to develop in certain parts of our community. So if we look at incentives such as that, we look at incentives about how we get housing started up in our southern part of our community, maybe there's some incentives out there that we're not aware of that we can include as opportunities for you all to put on the table. And if we're sincere about getting development going on the South Side, then we clearly look at our land use plans that we have. Are they sufficient? You check the box yes, then we move forward as development comes in and we approve it as soon as it comes in.
And Wayne, one other thing we talked about too was the sewer line. We talk about that, that's one of the, one of the things that's been holding stuff up because of the lack of, we got people down in certain areas on Septic.
That's right. So sewer, in, in order to serve growth in our community, and especially in the southern part of our community, what we have to be really careful about is Wackulla Springs protection. We have other policies in our comprehensive plan that say we need to make sure that we protect Wackulla Springs. And how we do that is taking people off the Septic tanks and putting them on central sewer. In the meantime, there's kind of a counterbalance, because once you provide central sewer, it also provides opportunities for growth and development. So we'll look at our systems in that area, we see where there's, where there's existing capacity to promote growth, and where there's not enough capacity to, to promote growth if we extend the sewer. So that's all, all part of our water and sewer master plans, but sewer is going to be king as far as being able to grow in certain parts of our community. So we need to make sure we have adequate capabilities to extend sewer to those areas that need the sewer the most.
And we want to do smart growth. We want to do growth without gentrification.
That is correct.
We, we got to do, got to walk that tightrope.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tim, you have some great comments, and if you would like to make a motion to bring back an agenda item at a future date specifically examining and providing recommendations for the extension of the Urban Services Boundary, I am sure that you would find support amongst your colleagues to do that.
I believe I would, but Mr. Mayor, before I do that, I saw City Manager rise up to say something.
Sure. We'll, we'll get back to him in just a second.
Okay, okay.
I also want you to know that I agree, and I know you've heard me on the record at the IA meetings. In fact, tomorrow, I believe we'll be having a discussion as well in regards to the fairgrounds.
Absolutely.
You, you could not be more on point. In, in my book, you know my feelings, I've made it very public and formal, that I do believe it's time to redevelop the fairgrounds. I think we have an amazing opportunity that is a large swath of land on South Monroe Street that would serve as an anchor. If you think about it now, we have an entire city block on the north part of South Monroe Street that's going to be redeveloped. We have an opportunity with the fairgrounds. We can really begin some incredible work by moving forward. I, I appreciate your comments.
Absolutely. Well, I offer the motion that an agenda item be brought back to provide information on what would need to be done to expand the Urban Service area and any other pertinent information to the development and expansion of the, the South Side.
Is there a second, seconded by Commissioner Richardson? Mr. Manager, I know you wanted to speak.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I think it's on point to this, because there are two elements of the motion. I would recommend that the motion include staff recommended option one, that is going to identify those trends and constraints that may inhibit growth today. So it's going to look in, in the past, it'll look forward. So I think that's, in essence, Mayor Pro Tim, what you said. Secondly, Mayor, what you've asked for is also some discussion and exploration about moving the Urban Services Boundary. Those are two distinct things. Just want to put that out there. I think that's the nature of the motion. And Wayne did an excellent job of describing, for example, sewer infrastructure is a great example of how that can influence growth. And, and, and if I can just finish this comment, because I don't want to get ahead of the others, there is a considerable, a considerable amount of work underway right now on the South Side, and I think that will be evident in the report, and we can build upon that to make sure we could continue, well, not continue, that we could facilitate growth in our Southern Strategy area.
Wonderful. Madam Mayor Pro Tim, I know you heard the comments and the recommendation by the city manager. I'm assuming that that is all right to include in your motion as well?
Absolutely.
And Commissioner Richardson, I'm sure that you're fine with this, with that motion still as your second?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, let's, let's keep the conversation going. Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Bryant, any comments? Commissioner Richardson, feel free to jump in.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I was, I think it was a candidate's forum we had recently, and this issue of the Southern Strategy came up, and I'm going to address that moniker Southern Strategy here in a minute, because it's, in light of what we've done earlier on the agenda in this era of heightened racial awareness, I don't know that we want to be promoting a Southern Strategy. Like I said, I'll get back to that. But, but in that, in that candidate's forum, one of the things that I told them was that 30 years ago, when my wife and I were looking to build our home, we could have gone to Kalern, we could have gone to Oxbottom, we could have gone to any of the northeast neighborhoods that we wanted to because our income would afford us that. But we chose to build our home and raise our family on the South Side of town. We wanted to make that kind of investment and commitment in the South Side of Tallahassee. And we didn't have as much going on now or then as we do now in terms of improvements. But that was part of the reason that I ran for the City Commission, was to help to make that happen. And that's been my agenda as a member of this commission and the IA and the CRA, to make sure that we started making investments in an area of our community that had long been neglected in terms of infrastructure and investment and the housing development, economic business development. And so we're, we're, we're now focusing on the South Side of, of Tallahassee, which is much needed. And certainly, we've got to make sure that we have the infrastructure in place to accommodate that growth. That's, that's where we started with the original blueprint committee. We were growing as a community, but we didn't have the infrastructure in place to support that growth. And so we came up with a plan to put the infrastructure in place in a way to pay for it. And so that's where we are now with this Southern Strategy and our, and our investment in the South Side of Tallahassee going forward. I'm, I'm certainly excited about it and look forward to all of the good things that we've got planned for this part of our community. And as, as Commissioner Williams Cox said, and I said at this candidate's forum, we've always got to keep in mind this issue of gentrification. I talked to my brother this past weekend over in Jacksonville. Downtown Jacksonville used to be owned by African Americans. Now you go to downtown Jacksonville, and the only African Americans you find are the homeless people at the homeless shelter, because they were all moved out, their land was taken away, and we certainly don't want to see that happen here in Tallahassee. And it's not just Jacksonville, but it, it's happened and it's happening in other cities. So we've always got to keep that in mind as we grow as well. So with that said, you know, in, in light of what we've done earlier on the agenda with the renaming of Chapman Park and, or Dr. Charles Evans Park now, and the Community Remembrance Project, I, I think it's time for us, Mr. Mayor, to rename this strategy. If we all are aware of what the original Southern Strategy was and was meant to do politically, I, you know, this was just, it just recently came to my mind that, that we might want, and for those that don't know, the Southern Strategy was a political strategy put in place by the Republican Party during the Civil Rights Era to, to, to realign the politics of the South by, by creating racial tension among whites and blacks in the South, where whites, poor and conservative whites had traditionally voted for Democrats. They now developed, the Republican Party developed a strategy based on racism against African Americans to get whites in the South to vote for the Republican Party, and that was called the Southern Strategy. So I, I think, Mr. Mayor, we ought to, in, in this era of heightened racial awareness, reconsider what we're calling this strategy to develop, to develop or redevelop the southern part of our community.
Couldn't agree with you more. Do you want staff to bring back recommendations, and would you like to work with staff?
If, if Commissioner Williams Cox is amenable to that, we could make that a part of the motion that they...
Let's just pile it all in there.
Yeah.
The ragu motion is in there. All in there. Absolutely. And I would, I would ask though that if someone feels very strongly about something, don't let staff, you know, floundering, make a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure, absolutely. But no, I think that's a wonderful suggestion, Commissioner Richardson. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant, then Commissioner Matlow? Mr. Bryant, I think you're muted.
I am muted, but I'm not now. I was, I was saying that most of my notes that I've taken regarding this item have already been brought to light, so I won't repeat it. But I do have a question regarding, do we have any funds budgeted for this particular item? And given we've just completed our budget workshop, and we're going forward into a new year, how are these funds identified in our budget? That's my first question.
Commissioners, for the work, we're all going to do it internally with staff. We have existing resources that are focused on completing the report. Clearly, this report's going to touch multiple departments across the city, and we'll be able to pull those resources as needed to complete the report. So at the end of the day, though, if there's recommendations that comes out, then, then that's something we'll have to focus on at a later time.
Okay, so I guess the bottom line then is that we will look at funds that currently exist to develop the report, and from the report, we would then identify funds to make things happen. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand how we'll go forward.
I apologize if I wasn't clear. So to, in order to do the report, we will do that from a staff perspective. So staff has the capability of completing the report. So what may come out of that, though, are other recommendations that you have regarding thing, getting things done in the community as a result of the report. So that's something that we, after the report is completed, after you have reviewed it and approved it, then there may be additional work we have to go through to get to the end result that you're asking for. And that may require budget discussion, and it may not. It may be policy items that we can address from a development perspective. So until we get the report finalized and get the recommendations in front of you with your actions, we really don't know how to answer that question, to be quite honest with you.
That's fine. You, you answered it. I just wanted to make sure as we plan, that we don't plan, I, I review the report from 2016. There are a lot of items in the report, and I do really want to get an update on what we said we would do in 2016 and actually what has been done. Because I think as we move forward, ideas that were appropriate in 2016 and we put things in place, are we continuing? Have we stopped? Is it relevant today? And I think those are the things we, we have to know as we, we start to plan to move forward. And then the last thing I, I will say is that I think the, the fairgrounds has to be a part of this deliberation, because I, I don't know how we can continue to have that much land sitting on the South Side of town and talk about our commitment to whatever we, we, we term the Southern Strategy, Curtis. But we, we have to actually make a commitment. So I, I just want to add that on to what has already been said. So that, that's two or three things for me, but we, we definitely need to look at the fairgrounds. But that's fair. I won't...
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it's pretty much been summed up again, you know, the more you know, information's power. I look forward to, you know, that information coming back for discussion.
Excellent. There's a motion on the table by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That is Janusley 5-0. We are on item number 12.04. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, 1204 involves, we're seeking your approval of a short-term affordable housing construction loan program. You initiated this discussion last November. You asked staff to fully develop a program that would encourage the development of more affordable housing units, making loans available to those that may not otherwise have them available to them at low interest rates. So over the last number of months, our Community Housing and Human Services Department, that is led by our Director, Ben Ojatayo, have put together a good recommendation. The, the amount of money that we're recommending to use for this comes from our Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the amount of $750,000, that essentially becomes a revolving fund, and we're pretty excited about the opportunity. I'd like Ben to share kind of what the program structure will look like and who's qualified to receive it, and just hit on the low interest rate component of it.
Sure, thank you, City Manager. You have a brief summary of that in your agenda, but for those that are listening that don't know, this is a one way, as you very clearly and enthusiastically requested for us to develop an initiative or a program that will encourage private sector involvement in developing affordable housing units. So this program is designed to be attractive to private developers, but also that includes nonprofit developers that can access these loans at up to 175,000 per loan, and up to two loans at a time. The idea is that it will be a short-term, quick turnaround so that we can get projects that are ready to, to go, that can be built, and that there is an incentive to turn around and repay the loans quickly by getting actual homeowners inside these homes, pay back into the fund, and we have that available to circle that back to the next developer. It's a very exciting opportunity for us. We, we have in the past partnered with other agencies sort of as it comes up. This program allows us to formalize this strategy, to have a dedicated set of funds that are available for these agencies to access. We are proposing that the applications be available on a rolling basis throughout the year, so at any point, so long as there are funds available, they'll have access to, to apply, and that we would offer these loans at very low interest rates, below what the Wall Street Journal interest, the prime rate would be at that time, which would, would beat anything that they could find as far as a conventional loan. So we would be leveraging our resources. Organizations can, can bank on us, and they can get the capital that will allow them to build their projects relatively quickly. I will also want to highlight that it is designed to be short-term, so about 18 months of a turnaround from when there is a loan agreement established, or six months after the certificate of occupancy is issued, whichever comes earlier. And there is the ability to leverage additional incentives. You may be well aware of the myriad of programs that we have in place to generate affordable housing units, but also to subsidize and to preserve existing ones. So a developer could still tap into our other incentives, such as our water and sewer fees waiver, they can still connect their prospective buyers to down payment assistance, particularly for those buyers that are earning 80% or less of our area median income. So all of those options are still available to further incentivize this kind of development. We're hopeful that with all these things packaged together and marketed well, we'll be able to bring more partners that can help us to produce more affordable housing units. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time, but thank you, that's a high-level summary.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cook, do we have any public comments on this item?
Mayor, we do on this item, let's see, we have on 1204, we had two written comments, both supportive of the item, both also suggesting that there, that nonprofits be able to be active in the program. And then we have two written, or in addition to the two written, we have two who have requested to speak on the item. Those I will call now, the first of those is Bill Wilson. Bill Wilson. Bill Wilson. I don't hear Mr. Wilson, but he did submit, he was one of the ones who also submitted written comments, so you can, can see his remarks. Again, for those who are just tuning in, any written comments are, are distributed, um, to the commission in advance of the meeting and also posted publicly. And I think I just heard Mr. Wilson's voice, is that right?
I'm here.
Uh, Mr. Wilson, you may, uh, begin your remarks. You'll have, uh, three minutes. I'll give you a heads up when you have 30 seconds remaining because the nature of the meeting, I will need to, um, when I designate your three minutes are up, the moderator will, will toggle the microphone.
Thank you, sir. Mayor and Commissioners, I want to thank you all for, for moving this item forward. Um, it's, it's a much-needed tool in the affordable housing, uh, toolkit. But I also want to thank Abena and, and Michael for, uh, Michael Shabat for the work they did on, on getting this together and the openness and willingness to work with the folks who are interested in this, in, in formalizing this program. We had an online meeting, uh, to talk through it. They prepared a draft. We got to respond to the draft and obviously they listened to our comments because, uh, this thing is, is pretty well done. Our only question and concern is that since most of the nonprofits that have been doing most of the affordable housing work, that, that if there's going to be a preference for anybody getting money under this program, uh, the nonprofits ought to be in that preference list as well. And, um, that's, with that one minor change, uh, hooray and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we have one other, uh, speaker and that speaker is John Coulter. John Coulter. Not hearing, not hearing him respond, Mayor. That's the last speaker we, we have on this item and I will turn it back to you.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, let's open it up for discussion and a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I move, uh, staff recommendation and let's, 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 let's just do it.
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion's been properly made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Dr. Bryant and Commissioner Richardson. Is there any further comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, sir, Commissioner Richardson.
I, I would just, uh, uh, use your, your phrasing, let's turn some dirt.
That's right.
And make this happen. We've talked about it long enough. Uh, I want to see us turn some dirt and, uh, want to see us give some keys to some homeowners and their families.
Amen.
Thank you.
Couldn't agree with you more. And hey, let's take a second to recognize, this is a great program and I'm really proud to work with you all on this and I want to thank Ben and her team for putting this together as well. Um, absolutely, this is great. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Folks, it's 4:55, I'm gonna ask you to mute your phone line, mute your, uh, um, your video camera if you would like. Let's take a five-minute stretch break. We're coming back at five o'clock for the, uh, public hearing. After the public hearing, we will finish with, uh, the rest of the business under policy formation and direction, okay? So let's take a quick break. We'll literally be back in five minutes.
The public hearing, we are on item number 13.01, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.01 is the second and final public hearing on Resolution Number 20-R-28, a resolution of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, just designating a Brownsville area for the purposes of economic development, environmental remediation and rehabilitation, authorizing the city manager to notify the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of this designation and providing an effective date. The adoption of a resolution is required by the Florida Brownsvilles Redevelopment Act and Chapter 166 of the Florida statutes to, to designate the Lafayette Gardens reuse area, a 5.76 acre area located at 1211 East Lafayette Street, near the intersection of Magnolia and East Lafayette Street, as a Brownsville site. The property owner, HTG Lafayette LLC, has obtained approval to build a 96-unit multifamily affordable housing residential complex. Contiguous to the site is the former Concord Custom Cleaners site, which has confirmed groundwater contamination and is undergoing site rehabilitation. Designation as a Brownsville site will allow the property owner to access benefits under the federal and state Brownsville programs. Option one is recommended, which is to conduct the second public hearing and to also approve the resol- the resolution as a men- as recommended. Mr. Cook? I'm sorry.
That's all right. Mr. Cook, do we have any public speakers on this item?
We have no speakers. We have no written comment.
Excellent.
Sir, move option one, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, Commissioner Richardson moves, uh, staff recommendation, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Item number 13.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.02 is the first and only public hearing on Orders Number 20-O-2288, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, creating Sections 2-73 through 2-84 and Article 3 of Chapter 2 in the Code of General Ordinances Establishing an Independent Office of Inspector General, writing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. This ordinance, if adopted, will create an independent office of Inspector General within the city. The city auditor will serve as Inspector General and the office of the city auditor will serve as the office of the Inspector General. The ordinance was introduced on June 17th, 2020 and is before the city commission for public hearing.
I know that, uh, Mr. Sutton, uh, has played a crucial role and I certainly do appreciate all the hard work that you have done. Uh, in fact, why don't, uh, we take a second for a brief presentation by the auditor on this item and then, Mr. Cook, we can move into, uh, general comment, but let's make sure that we're all on the same page. So, Mr. Sutton, thank you once again and, uh, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention that since the introduction of this proposed ordinance, there've been a couple of public comments and a letter from the Ethics Board that voiced concerns about the establishment of the Inspector General's office. As you know, I've discussed these concerns with you individually, but for, for the benefit of the public, I'm asking you to allow me a few minutes to address those concerns. Those concerns are in basically four main areas. The first area relates to a loss of confidentiality when complaints are transferred between the Ethics Board and the Inspector General's office. The second is that there's no requirement in the ordinance that complaints received by the Inspector General, what relate to ethical matters, should be transferred to the Ethics Board. The third is the establishment of a fraud hotline by the Inspector General when there is already a ethics hotline maintained by the Ethics Office. And the last area has to do with the authority of the Inspector General to conduct training and education. As far as the first concern relating to confidentiality, the city attorney, the board counsel, and myself have worked together to, what, what I believe is to come up with an understanding that resolves and addresses all of their concerns. But additionally, we've agreed that if something does come up in the future, that we will work through those specifics of that instance at that time. And I, I think everybody's in agreement that those, those concerns have been addressed. The, uh, the issue relating to mandatory reporting to the Ethics Board of complaints of an ethical nature received by the Inspector General, we've already addressed those complaints in the policies of the Inspector General's office that I'm establishing right now. The, uh, we, we require not only the ethics complaints, but also any complaints that relate to an EEO matter be immediately referred to the appropriate office. Uh, but we also, these, I have concerns of a similar nature and I, I hope to address this at the next Ethics Board meeting. My concern is that if there's complaints that are received by the Ethics Board, they should be addressed by the Inspector General, that they should be immediately referred to the Inspector General rather than having to wait for up to a month for the next board meeting before a complaint can be reviewed by the board and then referred to the Inspector General. Uh, as, as it stands right now, the Ethics Board has indicated they intend to take up this issue at their next meeting. Uh, as far as the overlap of duties relating to the hotline, um, the city charter requires that the Ethics Board manage a citywide ethics hotline to receive allegations of local corruption, fraud, waste, mismanagement, campaign finance, and ethics violations. The orders express that there being two hotlines will lead to confusion on the part of complainants. That said, I think it's appropriate for the Inspector General to have a fraud hotline separate from that maintained by the Ethics Board because the Ethics Board does not have jurisdiction over issues relating to fraud, waste, or mismanagement. Uh, I, I feel very strongly that the city should have a mechanism to receive complaints directly rather than all complaints being filtered through a third party. I believe that each of you, as owners or managers and other facets of your life, would want your employees or customers to have a way to bring their complaints directly to you rather than going through a third party. So I, I really feel strongly that we should have a separate hotline for the city. The, uh, the issue of training and education was, was, was frankly a surprise to me that they, they raised concerns in this. They are, the, the Ethics Board is charged with providing training and education in the matter of ethics. It, in the ordinance for the establishment of the Inspector General, the Inspector General is charged with providing training and education, but it's silent as to what type of training and education that would relate to. We, uh, we never considered the possibility of performing training and education in the matter of ethics. Our intention was to address areas related to internal control, fraud prevention, and addressing policy and procedure violations that we regularly see in the course of our audits, helping to improve the operations of the city. So I am planning to amend our procedures and policies that we're developing to specifically include addressing ethics in those travel and training, or excuse me, training and education sessions. Uh, so thank you and I guess I'm open to respond to any comments or questions you all might have about the ordinance.
Thank you very much, Sutton. I appreciate it. Let's move into public comment. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we had one written comment submitted. That comment, um, was, had some reservations about the item, but was not opposed to establishing an Inspector General position. That's the only written comment we received. We had, uh, one individual request to speak. Uh, that individual is Brian Smith. Um, believe he had submitted a letter, um, to your previous meeting in, in written, uh, form, so this will give him an opportunity to speak to you. Mr. Smith, are you there?
Uh, yes, I am.
Very good. Uh, thank you for being here. You'll have, uh, three minutes for remarks and I'll give you a heads up when you have 30 seconds, um, remaining.
All right. Maybe you-
Jim, Jim, if, if I could, if I could jump in, uh, I think we need to know who, uh, Mr. Smith is.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
He'll introduce himself, I assume, but yes, with the Independent Ethics Board, I believe currently serving as Chair.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right, thank you. As stated, I am Brian Smith, Chair of the City of Tallahassee's, uh, Independent Ethics Board. Uh, on behalf of the Ethics Board, I would like to commend this city commission for its dedication to ethics and good government. Uh, we believe the creation of the Inspector General position is positive as long as this office can run parallel and complement the services already provided by the Ethics Board. Um, we do, however, have some minor issues with the ordinance as drafted. We hope that this commission can work with us today by amendment and later by directing staff to coordinate with our office in drafting and adopting, um, POP procedures to accompany this ordinance. Um, confidentiality of issues, uh, the Ethics Board is concerned that the ordinance as drafted could create scenarios when whistleblower and ethics complaints could inadvertently lose their confidentiality during the investigative process. Our staff spoke with the city attorney's office yesterday and who's committed to working with us in drafting procedures to cure these issues. Uh, we hope that our staff together can adopt comprehensive procedures to maintain confidentiality of whistleblower and ethics complaints. Uh, mandatory reporting of ethics complaints is another issue. Um, and another concern is that under Section 2-80 on Page 4 and 5 of your ordinance, it suggests duties to be handled by the Inspector General, but does not mandate any actions. While we understand the Inspector General needs the ability to exercise discretion in most duties, we are concerned that ethics complaints received by the Inspector General would not be required to be transferred to our office. Um, while the ordinance is not mandated, our staffs can adopt procedures as with the confidentiality issue to cure this matter. We would propose procedures that mandate ethics complaints received by the Inspector General be turned over to the Ethics Board within a certain period of time. Likewise, we envision the same requirements to apply to our staff, as was mentioned earlier, uh, meaning whistleblower complaints inadvertently submitted to our board will be required to be turned over to the Inspector General within a period of time. Um, the fraud hotline, the ordinance as it states, uh, creates a second fraud hotline that will serve the same purpose as the fraud hotline created by Section 61 of the city charter. The Ethics Board is concerned that creating a duplicate fraud hotline will create confusion for the public and city employees. The Ethics Board asks that the commission amend the ordinance today by deleting Section, well, subsection 15 of Section 280 found on Page 5 of your ordinance. In the past, the Ethics Board has faced challenges knowing to whom we would submit city complaints, creating the Inspector General fixes that issue, making a second hotline unnecessary. Uh, as far as education and training, the ordinance authorizes the Inspector General to provide education and training. Section 61 of the city charter requires ethics officers to provide education and training related to ethics. Currently, our Ethics Office provides education and training to public officials and city employees on the issues of ethics, sunshine law, and public records requirements. We do not have issues with the Inspector General educating city employees of their rights under the Florida's Whistleblower Act. We would just ask that the, that we have some sort of delineation be clarified in procedures if not done today. Conclusion, in conclusion, you have options to take a, action today. The suggested changes are minor enough as not to conflict with the statutory advertising requirements. If the commission is to pass this ordinance today, we ask that the following changes be made. In subsection 5 of Section 280 found on Page 5, insert "related to whistleblower complaints", following the words "training and education". Uh, we also ask that you delete subsection 15 of Section 2-80, which is found on Page 5, and we ask that you amend Section 4 of the ordinance on Page 7 to extend the effective date to beyond the timeframe necessary to adopt the necessary procedures. Further, we also ask that the commission, uh, to direct city staff to work with our staff to draft procedures addressing any outstanding issues such as confidentiality, mandatory reporting and training, and for adoption by this commission before implementation of the new office of Inspector General. We look forward to working with you and the new office of Inspector General moving forward.
Mr. Smith, thank you so much for participating and, and thank you so much for serving as Chair of our Ethics Board. We appreciate the hard work you and your board are doing.
All right. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to speak today.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor? I, I would, I would like to hear from, uh, from the, uh, auditor, his response to those requests, because I, I'm, I'm gonna just, for full disclosure, I've had conversation with all of these parties to make sure that when we got to this point, that we had some, we, we were, uh, and, you know, on the same sheet of music where we could be. So I'm interested in, uh, I, I must say that I learned today, like the same time everybody else learned today, that there were these outstanding concerns. So, uh, between the city auditor and the city attorney, if someone can speak to us about what has been asked for by the Ethics Chair, uh, as to whether these are things that we need to consider or not, please let us know because what we're, we gotta be sure of is that the Ethics Board, the Ethics Board is an independent, uh, elected by, I mean, um, body from the charter. The Inspector General is another independent body that we want to make sure we're clear on where, where the lines divide and make sure, you just need to be sure of where we are.
I agree. Why don't we start with Dennis and then we'll go to the city attorney?
As far as most of those issues, I believe I already addressed most of them. Uh, the, the issue relating to the confidentiality, I, I think we've come to an agreement there that, that we'll be able to address that. that we'll be able to address that without any issues. The mandatory reporting, we've already included, as I said, we've already included that in our policies for the Inspector General, that we are required to report issues relating to an ethical nature to the Ethics Board immediately. As far as overlap of duties with the fraud line and the ethics line, I believe strongly that the city should maintain its own independent method of receiving complaints rather than them being filtered through a third party such as the Ethics Board before they come to the city. I just think that's a good business practice. I don't agree with their proposal there. And then their request about changing the language relating to training, I disagree with that as well. I think they're looking at training much too narrowly focused, that our training would be in areas completely other than those that would be addressed by the ethics officer, more to the lines of internal controls, policies, procedures, preventing fraud, waste, and abuse, those types of issues, not ethics-related.
Appreciate it. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. In looking at the issues that have been raised by the Ethics Board, I think certainly all of them really can be dealt with to the extent that they are outstanding by way of drafting of policies and procedures. We had a very good discussion yesterday with their counsel, Mr. John Reed, regarding the confidentiality issues wherein we discussed the fact that the attorney, the Florida Attorney General, has indicated that there is no loss of confidentiality when staff are engaged in the processing of complaints. We do this all the time in other contexts. You consider public records exemptions, which have confidentiality attached to them. We have many staff that review these to determine the confidentiality. No confidentiality is lost. These are staff working to resolve issues, and the same thing will occur in this case with regard to any complaints that are filed with the Attorney General, with the Inspector General, or if there are complaints filed that are really the Inspector General's jurisdiction that need to be transferred. So this confidentiality can be maintained. It is often maintained in other contexts. Let's go on to the next issue. The lack of mandatory reporting on ethics complaints, again, as I said, this can be dealt with by way of procedure. The auditor has already said he's drafting procedures, his procedures, that will make sure that these types of complaints that are in the jurisdiction of the Ethics Board are transferred to the Ethics Board for their handling. We, if you look at the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, it clearly says that the Office of the Inspector General has no authority over the Ethics Board, its members, and employees and matters identified regarding the Board's duties. So obviously, there is no attempt in this regard to take over the responsibilities of the Ethics Board. With regard to the hotline, I think if you look at Florida Statute 112.3188, it clearly says that we can designate an Inspector General to receive complaints regarding fraud, misuse of property, gross mismanagement, and things of the like. And certainly, it is reasonable to have a direct point of contact in that regard. So in that, there is nothing unlawful in having the second line. Regarding training and education, as the auditor has said, there was no intention to take over the training component that is established in the charter or as stated in our code as to the Ethics Board, and certainly that can also be dealt with by way of policies and procedures.
You answered a lot of questions for me. Mayor Pro Tim, do you have any other follow-up questions for the city attorney or for Mr. Sutton? I believe you're muted.
I'm sorry, yeah, they've satisfied my concern and questions. Thank you.
That was in direct response to the Chairman of the Ethics Board that was testifying earlier. Let me go back to the clerk. Do we have other speakers on this item, sir?
Sir, we do not.
So we have no more speakers on this item. Okay, let's go back to full discussion amongst the City Commission.
Motion's been made for staff recommendation by Commissioner Richardson.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll give the second to Dr. Bryant. Any further discussion?
Just a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Matlow, of course.
Dennis, so with the policies that you spoke to, I think you've addressed most of the items. Would you also develop a training policy on what types of training you intend to provide?
Yes, sir, we can certainly do that.
Okay. And then my only other comment is, we do, first question about confidentiality and passing things back and forth, I think our goal needs to be to avoid that and direct people to the right place to address their issue. If that's the Inspector General for a certain issue, if it's the Ethics Board for an elected official or so have you, people need to know exactly where to go. So I'd like, you know, as we promote what we're doing, as we put out phone numbers, we provide the public with clear guidance on who they should be contacting because we just want to avoid that in the front end. And then I think that kind of speaks to the other issue as well. So I would just be looking for that with the hotline, you know, wherever our hotline is, we're like, if you're trying to call on these items, you need to call the Ethics Board, and we just have it, you know, next to each other at all times. So we're trying to avoid that confusion altogether.
Yes, most definitely.
And I support the motion.
Great point. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Mr. Sutton, contrary to popular belief, you were the one that brought this before the City Commission, certainly do appreciate your creativity in the office, moving your office forward, and for all the hard work that you've done. Thank you very much. We are moving on to 13.03. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-Z-19AA, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee amending the Leon County Public Health Unit New Mount Zion AME Church Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. The ordinance is amending the existing Leon County Public Health Unit New Mount Zion AME Church PUD. The subject of the PUD is a mixed-use PUD consisting of the Leon County Public Health Unit, the New Mount Zion AME Church, which includes daycare use and the city and county stormwater facilities. The proposed amendment will replace the daycare use with a pre-K through 5th grade elementary school. There will be no physical development as a result of the proposed use.
Wonderful. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, there's no written comment. There are no speakers.
No acceptance.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, seconded by Dr. Bryant. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 13.04, Madam Attorney.
Item number 13.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-Z-20AA, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending the Governor's Coroner's Plan Unit Development Concept Plan on the official zoning map of the City of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the City Commission, providing for conflicts, providing for separability, and providing an effective date. This ordinance proposes to amend the existing PUD to include a self-storage facility with climate-controlled and non-climate-controlled interior and exterior access units as an allowed use. The additional allowed use will apply to parcel G5 only.
Make sure, before you snip, mute your line.
Bless you.
Bless you.
I hit the camera.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have David Weiss, who would like to speak on the item. That's the only public input we have.
Sounds great. Do you have him on the line?
We should. David Weiss. I see the moderator coming to the screen, which makes me think we'll have a caller in just a moment. Not hearing David Weiss. Here we go.
Mr. Clerk, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you very much. You are live and audible, and we will give you three minutes for comment.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. David Weiss of the Ozley Law Firm, 123 South Calhoun Street, on behalf of the applicant. I do appreciate the opportunity. I will be very brief. I think the city attorney did a great job of introducing the item. I do want to emphasize, currently, the PUD includes 62 different permitted uses. All of those uses are permitted on all seven of the parcels, and they include office uses, commercial, and retail uses. There are numerous reasons why this proposed use for a self-storage facility is actually a lot less intrusive and less intense than a lot of the currently approved uses. We do agree with the conclusions that are in the staff report, that the PUD satisfies eligibility requirements in the Land Development Code, that it is consistent with the consolidated plan and all other applicable ordinances, that it is consistent with the purpose and intent of the PUD district. We agree with the unanimous recommendation of the Development Review Committee, Planning Commission, and the recommendation of staff to adopt the ordinance, subject to the conditions that are set forth in the ordinance. We will work with design works to help develop the standards that are requested per the Planning Commission. Staff has been very helpful. We do appreciate all their help, and we will certainly continue to work with them to address any concerns. Again, thank you very much for your time and consideration, and I am more than happy to answer any questions.
Certainly appreciate it. Is there any questions for representation of the applicant? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
All right, let's turn it over for discussion in action.
No acceptance.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tim. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Item number 13.05, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.05 is the first and only public hearing on the adoption of the amended FY 2015-2020 Consolidated Plan and the FY 2019-2020 Annual Action Plan. The city has received an additional CARES Act award of an emergency solutions grant of $1.8 million to continue mitigating the effects of COVID-19 for the city's housing insecure neighbors and those at risk of homelessness. As required by HUD, this public hearing provides for an amendment to the city's consolidated plan in order to appropriate the additional funds accordingly. As described in the agenda item materials, the fund's allocation focuses on homelessness prevention and diversion, rapid rehousing, as well as some shelter operation support. Article 1 is recommended, which includes the adoption of the amended plan.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on 13.05?
There are no speakers, nor is there written comment.
Excellent. Commissioner, it's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tim, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, can I make one comment?
Of course, I'm so sorry.
Kudos to Abena. She has done an outstanding job in having stepped into this new role. I've been hearing things on the street about her, how well she's working with people to get folks where they need to be, rapid housing in emergency situations and what have you. I love her attitude. She works hard on trying to get the yes and identifying other resources in the community to help with that. So I wanted to just say that about her and her staff and what an outstanding job they're doing, and I am looking forward to us eliminating homelessness under her leadership. I know that's a big thing, but I'm looking forward to it. It can happen in one day, but one step at a time. So thank you, Abena, for you and your staff for what you've done in this short period of time that you've been in your role.
Mayor Pro Tim, thank you for your comments. No further comment, motion on the table, it's been properly seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Madam Attorney, do we have any other items to come before us at the public hearing at this time?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Excellent. We are going to go back to policy formation and direction. We're on 12.05. When we are done with policy formation and direction, we will then take up unadjourned business speakers, and then City Commission information and sharing of ideas. 12.05, please, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. We've got an excellent update for you regarding our tempo and TFLA program. As you know, that's part of our Community Services Department that was created late last year and is being led by Dr. Campbell Thomas. We have a lot of energy, a lot of good momentum as it relates to these activities, and it's a natural time to provide you an update. We've reached some major milestones in our programs, and we're about to hit another milestone. I don't want to steal Dr. Campbell Thomas's thunder. I'm not going to do that. I know he's got a lengthy update. He'll compress it as much as he can. I think it's important, and at this point, I would like to turn it over to him.
Please.
Good evening. Good evening.
Hello. Good evening.
Hello. It's Mayor Daley. Respective Commissioners, I want to say to Mayor Pro Tim, William Cost, thanks for those introductory comments with respect to tempo and all of your support for the program. And it's been a while since we've talked, since the January retreat of last year, and as Deputy City Manager Barber would say, we have picked up the tempo and some other things as well. So I have a brief presentation with respect to the Community Services Department, and I'd like to share that information with you. We have a lot of exciting things that are going on, and will continue to take place. As you can see, the overview of our department is established in 2019 by our City Manager, Mr. Goode. And in that department, of course, now we've incorporated tempo, we have the Tallahassee Future Leaders Academy, as City Manager Goode spoke to, and we always have a homelessness community outreach, and I just cut through the chase there. That is Mr. Delmas Barber. Here's the team. I've already spoke to Mr. Barber. He's been involved with Abena's department and also the Big Ben CLC. He's working, keeps us updated on the GIS mapping that's going on, and also be doing assessments. Dr. Tara Holes, we haven't met her yet, she's my Youth Development Coordinator. Dr. Holes has been the catalyst behind our e-learning platform for TIFLA. She has been the exact right hire with respect to her curricular background as well as working with diversity populations. Mr. McPherson, he has an MSW. He's going to lead our charge working with both Florida State and Florida A&amp;M with respect to getting interns in social work. You have to have an MSW to be able to supervise those interns. Mr. McPherson overlooks the day-to-day operation of our case managers. Mr. Anthony James, Ms. Tia Washington, they are foot soldiers. We do a lot of things with respect to community, delivering bus passes, helping kids with IDs, driver's license, and all those things. They are foot soldiers. They handle case management. We have a case management software called Charity Tracker, and they go through the seven phases of case management and an action plan for every participant. Ms. Joni Quintanilla Byer, also a new hire. Not only is Ms. Quintanilla Byer wonderful with our grand outreach, she's been working with Ms. Whitehead's department, but she's also trilingual. Yes, you heard that correctly. She speaks Spanish, French, and English. And so we have an enlarging Hispanic population, while many of them speak English, but their parents do not. She's going to be instrumental in expanding our programs there. Mr. Darren McLamery. Darren is a former banker. Why do you need a former banker? Well, I'm glad you asked. Mr. McLamery will handle the financial literacy of our department, every tempo participant, and also TIFLA participants. He's working on financial literacy notebooks, parallel e-learning programs as well. We want them to have basic money management skills. I didn't know what a FICO score was until it was a bad one. And Carol Dixon, Carol has been around with us. She's helped in many administrative things. Carol is our lead on making sure, number one, our TIFLA participants get paid, and also she's looking at, when it comes to strategic plan objective 2A-2. Carol is our lead on making sure, number one, our TIFLA participants get paid, and also she's looking at when it comes to strategic plan objective two, A dash two, on the historical and the data for those former TIFLA participants to make sure that we're hitting those marks with our strategic plan. As you can see, our strategic plan objectives, we're on mark, we're establishing the baseline data for the TIFLA piece, and with a projection of reducing the number of tempo participants, our disconnected youth, we've already hit one of those marks as we speak. Let's talk about strategic plan objectives, impact on poverty. Twenty-five participants thus far have fair indoor living ways jobs. You can see that the city is doing its part in hiring qualified tempo participants. Ms. Marshall's department is the lead right now. You see other departments are hiring participants, and there's pending employment opportunities that start metro as coast drivers. TPD, Chief Revel already spoke to this. I'll talk about this later on as well. And also, Rob McGarry has talked with me about an initiative for electric and gas for tempo participants. Let's quickly go through the education piece, and of course, as you very well know, on that, education cohort one, of course, we had twelve graduates. There's that picture. Cohort two, fifteen graduates. Here's the crowning jewel, third year cohort three, as soon as it comes up on your screen, thirty-four graduates. Thirty prior to COVID- nineteen, four online graduates, and I predicted that if it was not for COVID- nineteen at this time, we would have graduated fifty tempo participants with their high school diplomas. That is a milestone. We're very happy. But I also want you to know that is a hyperlink. If you click on the tempo, it would give you the entire cohort three graduation ceremony. When it comes to TIFLA, education and career paths, the e-learning model, and we'll talk about this at the end, has already been selected by the U.S. Conference of Mayors as a very innovative piece. I can tell you, while I spoke to Dr. Holes about the ingredients of the program, making sure we keep the integrity of the five pillars established long before the aspect was given to us, I want you to know that she has built a wonderful e-learning model. I think it's going to get more awards. It is state-of-the-art, and I think it's going to be something that the entire nation will look at one day. This is also a hyperlink to that model. You can look at it. You can see what the e-learning is, the dollar wise they do for financial literacy. You can see also the five pillars and the number of minutes that each participant has to put in for these weeks of work. We have one hundred and seven participants at this time. Public safety. Certainly, public safety is a part of our strategic planning. One thousand fifty participants to date. I remember on that hot October two thousand seventeen day, twenty-five twenty-five Texas Street, signing up Tierra for the first time, holding her son Joshua, and to date, we have one thousand fifty participants. Over half of them had had issues with law enforcement prior to joining the program. We haven't had any real offenders. The others haven't offended, no violations of probation, one hundred zero percent recidivism. And Chief Revel spoke to this during the budget workshop. Tempo candidates for TPD's community service technicians, we have applicants already in the pool. We're looking forward to that. We want them to go into back into their community and build that relationship with policing, build that relationship with their community, and encourage others to do so and understand how this works. Some of the future initiatives, and I didn't put this one on here, as you very well know, August one, we are already in the renovated process of moving into South City. Representative Ozzy spoke to this with respect to the purpose-built community. We're moving into South City with respect to a community-based office is what we envisioned from the beginning. We'll have limited face-to-face, just like everyone else, considering COVID- nineteen and CDC processes. But at the same time, in that sense, it's track ten point zero one. We're covering Orange Avenue Apartments on Country Yard Drive. We're covering Magnolia Terrace. We're covering Sunrise, known as Hollyfield. That's a great triad of where our participants are. But this initiative that's on your screen is a Not My Son initiative. We're going to intentionally target at-risk youths in the promised zone and have their parents more involved with it, taking pledges, working with the cop squads, identifying law enforcement that are partnering with you. We can talk more about that at a later date. And also, a youth summit. This is on behalf of Deputy City Manager Barber. She talked about, we want to make sure that we get not only in-school youth, but out-of-school youth involved in what we're doing, have them doing certain things as soon as we can, having conversations, building relationships. We want to build relationships from ox bottom to bond, and so that's what she has envisioned. I'm very excited about that. Dr. Bryant, you, I know you're very much involved in STEM, but also at the time, I also kind of stuck an A in there for arts, because many of those multiple intelligents lie in the arts. We want all of our children involved with the science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics across the community, and that's what we envisioned in our youth summit. And as I get ready to close, let's just talk about a little bit about awards and acknowledgements. And as you can see, Tempo was awarded the Outstanding Partner of Excellence by Doning Community Ed. We were a finalist for Leon County School Partner of Excellence. TIFLA developed, we implemented the first ever e-learning platform, and it was selected by the U.S. Conference of Mayors as an innovative summer youth employment during COVID- nineteen. There was a national webinar presentation by Mayor Daley on Monday, and Mayor Daley, I want to say quickly, when I was taking copious notes, your opening remarks with respect to the pillars, the historical aspect, the commitment from the city of Tallahassee, doing what other municipalities can't do, was right on point, and your startup information with respect to resources and partnerships was well received. Homelessness and community outreach, and again, we collaborate with Ms. Ojentayo's department, and that is really Mr. Barber, working with Big Ben CLC. Delmas has done a fantastic job. We distributed as a department over six thousand city-issue face masks on the initiative of City Manager Goode, and again, eighty percent of those was collaborated on and distributed by Mr. Barber. But Tempo also, we went into those said South City areas to deliver a mask as well. So we're really excited about where we're going. We're excited about opening up a community-based office. We'll do all the things we need to do. We have picked up the tempo. We have picked up TIFLA, and we're working on our homeless community outreach. And I will pause right now for any questions that you may have of me.
All right. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
No questions. Outstanding job. You know, every time we hear about tempo, they have, they keep picking up the tempo. So I started trying to do a little workout, you know, July one, and I need some of that energy that Dr. Thomas has so I can go longer and further. And I'm glad he finally has a staff. Thank you, City Manager, for giving, you know, creating that office. And because Campbell, Campbell Thomas went out there by himself, and so we needed him to last a long time, so I'm glad you built a staff around him so that he could be with us a long time. And for those who don't know, he is a principal and preacher, and what he just did was a miracle. He said what he had to say in less than an hour. You know, principals and preachers, when you put them in front of a mic, they can go. But thank you for what you're doing. It's reflected in our community. And I know, I just know that I know that a thousand, we're up to a thousand graduates, you say, are participants.
Participants.
It's going to continue to grow, because we're going to keep sending people, and those who have gone through the program successfully will be sending others as well. So that's what we want. This is a direct impact on poverty, and I couldn't be more pleased. Thank you for you and your staff for the work that you're doing. I know that you got some vacancies over there. I'm going to put the word on the street that you got some vacancies, so we can get you fully staffed.
We've had the repurpose, but we're working on it. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No written comment, no speakers.
Excellent. Any other comment before Madam Mayor Pro Tem? I'm going to say that you made the motion for staff recommendation, if that's okay.
You would be saying correctly.
Excellent. By Dr. Bryant. Is there any other comment on this item? Dr. Thomas, keep up the great work. I thoroughly enjoyed and was honored to represent the city in your program virtually on the U.S. Conference of Mayors presentation on Monday. Thanks.
Keep up the tempo.
Most welcome.
There you go. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes unanimously. We are on item number twelve point oh six. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item twelve oh six is an update on three road segments. As we all know, the city of Tallahassee does not build an extensive number of new roads. We try to do our best for the road networks we have, but there are three that are underway now and are nearing completion. So I wanted to present this item to you before you moved into your summer break. In particular, one of the segments will come online this month. I think it'll be a much welcome segment, and so we wanted to take a moment just to tell you where we are with the progress. That's two segments involving Weems Road and then also the final segment of Famu Way. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Renetta Marshall, our General Manager of Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure.
Thank you, City Manager. I'm pleased to be here. I have to be more strategic about my placement on the agenda so I don't go after Dr. Thomas, but here I am. I would like to say before I get into the presentation that we are proud here at U at PI to be leading the pack as far as the number of tempo employees. And I'd like to give a shout out to some of those employees that participated in that great feat of accomplishment with the painting of the Black Lives Matter mural and completing that today. That was something that we held in great esteem. So now I am now going to share the screen here.
Renetta, Renetta, before you begin, so you open that door. Listen, I've got to say that Renetta is very humble. She's a team player. She makes things happen. Her team does too. And so she mentioned the Black Lives mural that's been painted on the street that I think we're all very excited about. Her team did an excellent job, and as we all know, apparently Noah was coming to town because it wouldn't quit raining. They painted in between the rainstorms, and they did a great job, Renetta. Please share that with the team.
I certainly will, City Manager. And yes, they did, in the rain and the sun. Okay, I'm here to give some good news today. We are pleased to present this update to you on three very important projects, as the City Manager mentioned. There's been significant progress on these projects over the last year, and even significant over the last four months as we dealt with this pandemic. I think that speaks to the dedication and hard work of city staff as well as our contracting partners. Now, while these projects primarily address improvements to enhance our vehicular and pedestrian mobility as well as safety, we also took the opportunity to make some significant upgrades to our utilities, specifically our water, sewer, and stormwater. And as the commission is aware, as well as the public, this provides a great value to the community in terms of economy of scale savings. So we're going to talk about Famu Way Extension, Weems Road Extension, and Weems Road Pass Project. We're going to start with the Famu Way Extension, and this is phase three. This gives a good aerial view of the extent of that project from the roundabout here at Gamble Street, and then this is the extension taking this all the way to Lake Bradford Road. Okay, let's talk about the goals. The goals, to create a gateway into the Famu campus as well as a parallel route or taking the traffic, some of the traffic off of Gaines Street. And as I said, this extends the roadway from Gamble to Lake Bradford Road. This is phase three of a three-phase project. The two first phases extended Famu Way to, from Wanish Way to Gamble Street, and that transformed that roadway that looked the way that it did, that had the deep ditch running alongside it, to a nice, safe, and reliable corridor, fit for lots of different modes of transportation. There was significant community engagement, multiple public meetings, as well as a citizen advisory group was put together to provide input, not only before design, during design, and even after design. And we always had a good web present on the city webpage to provide a good context for the project, as well as historical and current information. The cost, when we're talking about the roadways, is approximately six point four million dollars. The upgrades for the utilities, and in this case, it was sewer, is about two point eight million dollars. For the roadway, that consisted about fifteen hundred feet of roadway, fifteen hundred feet of a twelve-foot multi-use trail on the north side of the roadway, as well as an eight-foot sidewalk on the south side of the roadway. The underlying utility, the sewer upgrades, that was some major infrastructure, and we took the opportunity to upgrade our aging infrastructure, which was a thirty-six-inch gravity sewer main. And this is scheduled to be completed later this year in November. I wanted to take the opportunity to show you a few of these construction pictures, because once it's finished, you're not going to be able to see a lot of this. So again, this is the roundabout, and you can see the road construction there. This picture here, we're on the central drainage ditch, just like we did on the lower part of the ditch. We are stabilizing the embankment. These are the gabions right here for that stabilization. And here, there's going to be a bridge that crosses over the ditch, and these are fourteen by fourteen box culverts here. So you're not going to be able to see that later, but this is the immense work that's going on underground. And here, of course, you see the sidewalk construction, trail construction, and then roadway. Okay. Our next project is Weems Road, the Pass Project, and this is phase two. And on this side, this gives a good kind of aerial overview of that project. So what you see at the top of the screen is Mayhem right here, and here is the extension that you see, and it goes, and this is off the screen, but it goes all the way to the railroad crossing. And then here, we took an intersection, and we put a roundabout, and this is like a blow-up of that roundabout, and then a side view of that. So goals for this project, enhance the vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle safety, and do the connectivity from the railroad crossing to Mayhem Drive. And another very important goal for this was to reduce flooding. There was lots of flooding that would happen on Weems Road, and by the infrastructure that was built, that flooding will be reduced. And I'll show some of that at the end of this. And replace the open ditches with sidewalks. Okay, and again, community engagement on this project is on all of our projects, and this happened throughout. Okay, roadway construction for this is about a little less than six million dollars, and that consisted about twenty-eight hundred feet of roadway, along with multi-use trails and sidewalks. The water and sewer upgrades for this is about almost three million dollars. The entire water line along this project was replaced, and there was a forty-two-inch sewer gravity line that was replaced and encased in a sixty-inch, that's like almost five feet of steel casing. And there was another parallel thirty-inch force main that was built. All of this for redundancy and resiliency. This project is on schedule, and it's scheduled to be completed in October of this year. I think these are some very good pictures. Let's looking at before and after. This was before on Weems Road, and you see the flooding that's happening there overtopping that road. And this was the existing bridge that had existed prior to the construction with those six pipe culverts. So this is the bridge that was before, and now this is the bridge that has been constructed. So you see that these restrictions are no longer there, and it gives more leeway for the water to pass through. Again, this is a before and after. This was the road, and you see the ditch adjacent to there. And here is the after, the roadway, ice landscaping. Now, instead of a ditch, it's closed in, and then you have a sidewalk. And my final project here is the Weems Road Extension, and this gives, I think, a very good overview, this aerial, for the extent of this project. Over here on the left side, of course, is Mayhem at the top, that Capital Circle northeast. And then over here to the right, that is the stormwater facility to capture the stormwater from the roadway as well as adjacent parcels. Goals for this project was to reduce the congestion, the traffic congestion along the intersection of Capital Circle and Mayhem Drive, and to extend, as I said, Weems Road from Mayhem to Capital Circle. Great community engagement here, the citizens. And the other thing that I wanted to highlight, because we were doing some work on the And the other thing that I wanted to highlight because we were doing some work on the state road, that there was in addition to public meeting, there was a public hearing that was advertised and conducted. Cost for this project is about $6 million, a little over $6 million. And we also received a $1 million grant, a $1 million grant from DOT. So we were successful in getting grant funds. And this project is the one that's nearest to completion. And it is scheduled to be open at the end of this month and traffic will be reestablished. Again, some great pictures here. This one is the nearest to completion. This is the stormwater retention facility. This is the bridge that was being built with the stabilization, as you can see. And here we see the trail, landscaping, a different view of the trail. And then the sidewalks here with the adjacent landscaping. A lot of good work that was done. And that is the entirety of the presentation. I will be glad to take any questions.
Excellent. Thank you, Renetta. Certainly do appreciate it. Great job. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we did not receive written comment. We do have one citizen who was interested in speaking, Sacha Stark Vayner. I'll give her a minute to connect, although earlier when she made comments, I wasn't sure if she had concluded for the purposes of this meeting. But Sacha Stark Vayner.
Jim, she has left the meeting.
Okay, that was what I thought she might have indicated earlier, so we have no input on this item.
Excellent. No input and there is no action that is being suggested. Any questions for Renetta on the update?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, no questions, but I think it's very apparent when you see the before and the after, it's just, you know, light years, light years of how we take, I would listen to me talking about we take problems and create solutions that make our, that enhance our city and make our city look great. I want to thank Renetta and her team for, you know, being creative and then looking at those things and seeing what can be done. And so I am very proud of what's going on in all of these projects. FAMU Way is one that's, you know, been in the works for a long time. And it is great to see that in a few short months, at least by the end of this year, it's going to be open up for those residents and citizens to enjoy. And it's just going to add to that side of town. And I'm really, really pleased with that. Also pleased with the opening of more roadways to get traffic through over on Weems Road because I've used that cut through from time to time and then I have to turn off and go another way. So Renetta, you ready for your next challenge?
Yes, ma'am.
We need a way to get from Pedrick to 27 without having to go around. That's the next horizon. So thank you all for all that you've done. And I'm going to come back and thank you all later about the Black Lives Matter sign, a mural as they'll call it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Same. Let's move on to the final item for us today, 12.07, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the final policy item. So I will be quick with this. It represents a lot of progress. We're seeking your approval to move forward with the construction contract for the rehabilitation of our runway 1836. That's a north-south runway that provides redundancy, adequate length for all-size commercial airplanes. And it is a necessary thing for our airport. David and his team have done an excellent job kind of amassing some funds, some grant funds. Historically, that's how we would fund these kind of projects. And he's doing excellent. We want to push forward. We've got a very favorable proposal that includes considerable DDE participation. And I'd like David just to give a quick overview and seek your approval of this contract.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Mayor, Commissioners and appointed officials, I'd like to give you just a very quick overview of the project here. This includes rehabilitation of our north-south runway, as the City Manager mentioned. And it also includes upgrading of all the airfield lighting to LED lights, which will result in significant cost savings in the future. It meets the latest FAA design standards. It's based upon lessons learned from previous accidents and incidents regarding inadvertent to inactive runway from an adjacent ramp or taxiway facility. So with that, we're meeting the latest and greatest design standards, achieving some future cost savings strategies with respect to our lighting. And as you'll see here on the picture, it's an estimated 525 calendar day project, broken up into several phases. Phase one, it gets very tricky trying to move forward with the project, but also maintain aircraft flow and operation so that we don't interrupt the activities of our valued tenants and partners. So as you can see through the various aircraft movements, if I'm on the north apron, we'll be able to stage it in a way that when we shut down the runway, they'll be able to taxi over round to the active runway, which would be our runway nine. And from the central apron, which is where Flightline is at with their technical services hangar, we've provided a path and worked very well with them to get them out of their facility and then onto the runway as well. So we would anticipate that being phase one and shutting down the runway during that period. Phase two is a longer period. And again, this is contingent upon our funding availability. We continue to work with both the FAA and the FDOT, who have been just tremendous partners with us throughout this process. While we were not able to establish FAA Airport Improvement Program eligibility for the project, the area you'll see highlighted in blue is what they worked with us on. And that'll be our next grant that we anticipate receiving as we move ahead. And you'll see the amount of that grant here shortly. But so the blue represents new taxiway, new lighting. The yellow is what we have to pay for here locally. And then that also opens up that entire north side of North property. Some people refer to it as our parcel A. It opens up this entire north area for future development opportunities and aircraft access and egress from that area. And so moving on to phase three, we would also phase that. And that's where you're going to start to see some of the removal of some of these old pavement sections that no longer meet FAA standards. So from that standpoint, as I mentioned, this project will bring us up to the latest design standards and safety standards that carry us into the future. It's important that we recognize the airport is the gateway to the community and is a key economic generator for the area and entire North Florida region. So we've developed this plan to facilitate all aspects of aviation. So a lot of times when people think about the airport, they only think of the airlines. It's important to recognize that we serve various segments of aviation. So with the airline traffic, they're certainly our valued partners and we certainly enjoy our relationship with them. But we also got to think about the military. This runway is very heavily used by the military. It was key and instrumental in our response to Hurricane Michael. And the aftermath of that is we worked with the state to develop the logistics staging area here on the property, worked with the National Guard as they brought in helicopters and were providing that emergency relief into those affected areas using this runway. As we stand here today, the initial funding, the total construction costs, as you'll see, is over $35 million. Right now, we have about half of it lined up with working with FDOT. We have an existing grant that's already been allocated to us. FAA, we're anticipating a grant announcement within the next 45 days, which will be the approximately estimating to be about $6 million there. And then as we look at the CARES Act and the leveraging of those dollars available within the CARES Act, we've been able to strike a really nice balance consistent with the guidance within the CARES Act and the release that was offered by the U.S. Transportation Secretary Elaine Chao as she announced the CARES Grant Awards. So we've found a very nice balance of using the CARES for both the operational expenses and also leveraging against these other grant opportunities that provide our local match to that. So these CARES dollars tend to be used as local match to meet these other funding opportunities. So we've achieved great leveraging of our available dollars. And lastly, the DDE goal for the project was 15.39%. The DDE participation level, and we're recommending award to CW Roberts, who back in 2015 completed the reconstruction and rehabilitation of our east-west runway. So they are the same company that previously did the work for us and did a wonderful job and had the right expertise to do the job. So with that, they have really knocked it out of the park with the proposed DDE participation level of 24.56%. And with that, I'll be available to answer any questions you may have.
David, thank you very much. Mr. Clark, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we have no individuals who wish to speak on the item. We did have one written comment in opposition that was distributed to you previously. And I believe sent directly to you as well.
All right, excellent. Let's open it up for discussion, colleagues. Mayor Pro Tim moved staff recommendation on the item, seconded by Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do we have anything else coming for us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir, we do not. Thank you.
Any other items to come before the City Commission today?
No, sir.
We are on un-agenda business speakers. Mr. Clark, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor, we do have a number of speakers. And I will call them one by one, ask you to be patient. We have a couple of folks who have connected that we hadn't identified and a couple of folks that we expected to connect that we haven't seen. And we will see if that's a perfect match or not. But with that, the first speaker is Michael McLaughlin.
How many speakers do we have total, Mr. Clark?
Mayor, I have 14.
14, excellent. Just run the show.
All right, Michael McLaughlin. Okay, do not hear. Mr. McLaughlin, the next speaker will be Darwin Gamble. Mr. Gamble, you'll be our first speaker on un-agenda. And I'm giving just a minute as we learned earlier. It seems like it takes a few seconds for the connection to take place.
Okay, can I speak now?
Absolutely. The connection took place. You were there, Mr. Gamble. The floor is yours. I'll give you a heads up when you have 30 seconds remaining out of the three minutes you have.
All right, thank you, and good evening, everyone. This is Darwin Gamble, 1248 Halifax Court. And thank you very much for allowing the public to be heard during one of your virtual meetings. I'd like to address what I think may be some confusion about this topic. The Governor's Executive Order that allowed you to have these virtual meetings specifically did not waive any requirements in Chapter 286 Florida statutes, that's the sunshine law. Section 286.0114 says, "The public shall be given an opportunity to be heard on anything coming before a board or a commission." Now, folks, that language is not a figure of speech, as some people seem to believe it is. If you go back and do research on Senate Bill 50 that passed in 2013, you'll find out that that legislation had nothing to do with written comments. It also had nothing to do with comments during meetings with staff or how accessible you are as individuals to your constituents. And it certainly had nothing to do with charrettes. It had everything to do with people being able to speak and be heard during meetings of boards and commissions. Now, shortly after the executive order, several local governments around the state made provisions, like the one I'm using now, to speak before their local governments, but not Tallahassee until today. And Leon County has done nothing. I would remind you that the 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution entitles every person in every state the equal protection of the laws of that state, including Chapter 286. And it really bothers me that some people in Florida have all these months been able to speak and be heard during meetings of their boards and commissions, and we haven't, at least in Tallahassee until today. And as I said, the county has done nothing. So I'm really disappointed in this commission that it took you so long to comply with the law. However, please keep it up. You should do this for every virtual meeting you have from now on, including joint meetings with the county, such as the blueprint meetings tomorrow. And if they don't go along with it, you should refuse to meet with them. So this is a very important issue, and you should have done this a long time ago, but I'm glad you're doing it now. And those are my remarks for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Max Epstein.
Hello.
Good evening. You are now recognized on the un-agenda. And again, as you spoke earlier, three minutes for your remarks.
Commissioners, I emailed you last week about the exponential spread of COVID-19 in Tallahassee and Leon County. The spike started about 14 days ago. You might remember the long lines, patients first. Those were not even included in the state tallies for several days. And during that time, we had a between 12 and 18% positive rate. In the last seven days, we've added 700 cases. In the last 10 days, we've added 1,000 cases. This brings our positive rate to about 10% if you average it, and it's increasing. Our hospitals are getting slammed. At the beginning of this, 14 days ago, we had five hospitalized COVID patients. As of two days ago, there were 26 at Capital Regional, 22 at Capital Regional hospitalized probable, and over 20 hospitalized confirmed at TMH. These numbers are only increasing. I've created a petition that over 100 people, 165 people have signed so far. We need to roll back to the phase one of reopening and consider a lockdown of seven to 14 days. In just a few short weeks, all of our university students are going to return and Leon County schools are supposed to open. I can tell you that my partner is terrified of going back to teaching. She doesn't want to get sick. She doesn't want to see her teachers get sick, who are often older and have pre-existing conditions. And she doesn't want to see her students get sick. We have an epidemic right now in teens and college-age students. There is absolutely no way that this opening is going to go well. They're going to bring it back to their teachers, to their partners, to their parents. People are going to get sick. So something must be done. Clearly, we do not have leadership from our governor or president. But it's time that our local government steps up. And according to some computer models, we may see 70,000 new confirmed infections per day by August. This is not something that should be taken lightly, and I would appreciate a response from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epstein. Our next speaker is Haley Gentile. I know it's Haley and I'm pretty sure it's Gentile.
Hello.
Hi, good evening. You are recognized for your remarks. You may begin.
No, this is...
Hi, could you introduce yourself again? I think the connection wasn't clear there for a moment.
Hey, Jim Haley has left the meeting she was in earlier, but she's no longer...
Hey, Jim Haley has left the meeting she was in earlier, but she's no longer in.
Okay. Then our next speaker is Delilah Pierre.
Um, I just want to say that Haley Gentile would like to speak again because she got booted out without having a chance to give her regular comment. But to go on to what I wanted to kind of like talk about today, so like if y'all could put Haley Gentile for later in the program, or like reset up the connection between her, that would be really awesome. But what I wanted to talk about today specifically was about the Police Citizen Review Board and the kind of lack of recognition, I think, of both the City Commission, the City Manager, and the State Attorney of what's been happening in Tallahassee concerning the instances of police brutality and racial oppression. I saw during the City Commission meeting that we talked about the Black Lives Matter sign that was painted, I believe in Railroad Square. And I think that's an incredible accomplishment, but kind of underlines the very few real accomplishments we've made in combating police brutality in our city and our town. And I wanted specifically to talk about the Police Citizen Review Board, which has kind of shown as this mechanism to help solve the problems of police brutality and issues that we've been having with these killings the police have been perpetrating in our community, as something that really lacks any kind of power to actually hold police officers accountable. The Citizens Review Board, not only do the members of it have to literally go through training at the police academy, not only are they in constant conflict of interest, in which they have to do several things that have them see the side of the perspective, the side of the people. Overall, the people that the City Commission, that the Citizen Review Board reports to, the people that have complete control and power over them, are Reese Goode and Lawrence Revelle, the two people that we have these problems with, the two people who I would say are most responsible for the implementation of police brutality in our city. And so I want to say that we need to fight for a civilian police accountability board, and that for the Police Citizen Review Board, in order for a real mechanism of reform to be created, it has to have power within the people. It has to have power that gives actual citizens legitimate affirmative power over what they're doing. And I also want to talk specifically about Tony McDade and his death, and how I expect more from a pro LGBTQ+ mayor and from a pro LGBTQ+ citizen board, City Commission. I expect y'all to not only, you know, fight for queer, black, and trans people in the ways where you're creating a Pride Month for us, which is really nice, but also to fight for us in more concrete ways, and to specifically condemn the murderer of Tony McDade, and to specifically stand for the black trans community and this issue and problem. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor and Commissioners, just for information, I'm not sure where the disconnect happened that caused Haley Gentile's connection to be lost, but at least as we stand now, we don't have the mechanism in place to reconnect. It's important that people connect and remain connected. And I'm not moderating that part of the technical components. I'm not sure what happened, but just wanted to let you know that we won't be able to do that reconnection, but it's not because we don't have an interest in doing so. It's just that that's the setup of these WebEx meetings as we're working. With that, the next speaker is Anthony Suarez. I will move to Zeke Greenwood. Zeke Greenwood will be next. We may find that some individuals... Oh, oh, I think I heard Zeke Greenwood. Please, you may begin with three minutes of comments for the commission.
Before I start, Haley is still on the line with the same phone number.
Oh, okay.
She registered. So if you can let her go after me, I guess it's the same phone number.
Okay. I'll give it another shot, and that'd be great. With that, you're free to begin.
Okay. So what I want to talk about is the Citizens Review Board. It has no real power to enact change or hold TPD accountable. You have ignored hundreds of comments in previous meetings about this issue and made it extremely difficult to finally give a public comment in this meeting. This proves you all do not care about what your citizens want, and instead are making small useless changes that you know will not give any power back to the community. We will not be silenced or pacified. You cannot paint Black Lives Matter on an intersection and then do nothing to change the way the Tallahassee Police Department treats the black people in Tallahassee. We demand a democratically-elected civilian police accountability council with no tie to the police department that has the power to hire and fire the TPD police chief, right determine and maintain final authority over TPD policy, have the power to compel witness testimony, except where prohibited by the law enforcement officer's bill rights, have the power to examine and act concerning all claims of misconduct, and have the power to negotiate the TPD union contract and coordinate with the City Commission for oversight of the TPD budget. We will not accept anything less than this. Put forward or support a motion to create a CPAC in Tallahassee now. We can lead the nation in making real reforms that hold the city's police department accountable to the citizens it supposedly protects. The crimes of the Tallahassee Police Department have largely been ignored by city officials, who have instead chosen to talk about police brutality as an abstract concept we aren't seeing play out on our streets. In addition to refusing to investigate Toyin's disappearance, which led to her death, TPD has killed three people in three months. So in addition to a civilian police accountability council, we demand the immediate indictment of killer cop Zachary Jones, who murdered Michael Johnson on March 20, and the release of the footage of the murders of Willan Woodard, Tony McDade, and Michael Johnson, as well as the names and immediate indictment of the officers involved. Lawrence Revelle, the chief of TPD, is a killer cop himself, having killed George Williams in 1996. He must be fired, and City Manager Reese Goode must resign himself because of his role in appointing a killer cop to chief of police. Again, we will accept nothing less, and we will not back down until our demands are met. You're putting people's lives on the line every day when you allow these killer cops free rein to murder black people as they see fit. This is disgusting. You have the power to make real change in our communities and get justice, so do it.
Right. With those comments, and as was stated at the beginning of those remarks, it sounds like Haley Gentile may still be available. So I will call the name Haley Gentile and see if we have a connection.
Yes. Is this...
Very good. Yeah, we can hear you loud and clear. You may begin.
Perfect. Thank you so much for putting in that additional effort. I appreciate it. So my name's Haley Gentile. I reside on Holm Street in the Providence neighborhood. I lived here for about six years and in Tallahassee for 11. I'm calling in today to demand that the commission fully consider whether the commission's proposed Police Civilian Review Board truly addresses the concerns raised by Tallahasians. We want the police to be accountable to the people that they're supposed to serve and protect. The ordinance must include the democratic election of representatives, and the board must have real power. The board that was proposed in June is unacceptable, as it fails to have members of the board be democratically elected, grant the board hiring and firing power for the chief of police of TPD, grant the board access to involvement in police union contract negotiations, and grant the board oversight, budget oversight, excuse me. The gulf between the review board and these demands is particularly concerning to me in light of some recent developments from this morning. Chief Revelle gave some comments during this morning's budget workshop that states that the funding that will be going to the police department, in a scarcity environment in which we're facing millions of dollars of lost revenue, is going to be used to deal with marketing strategies and to promote the police department. This echoes some comments that he made during the Village Square event last week, where he said that TPD is doing everything that we want them to, we just don't know about it. That is very easily falsifiable, and it makes me extremely concerned about the democratic responsiveness of our city leadership and their tendency to rely on Band-Aids rather than substantive solutions. And I fully appreciate the efforts to fulfill the statutory duty to have public comments, but this process was incredibly unwieldy and onerous. I was on the call for three hours before I was dropped. I didn't have an interruption in service. My phone was fully charged. Most of us don't have landlines. We're sending out notice that, you know, in this PDF that, "Call from a landline." That doesn't exist for most of the people in Tallahassee. And I hope that these processes can be further refined in the future, moving forward. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Satya Stark Bainer. And again, I believe, or I know comments were made earlier, and at the end of those comments, there's indication that that might be it for the evening, but I'll call the name again, Satya Stark Bainer, just to be sure. All right. The next speaker we had identified was Brian Smith. I believe that was a duplicate registration in error from our Independent Ethics Board. So that makes our next speaker, Carolina Bances. Carolina Bances. Hearing nothing, Regina Joseph. Regina Joseph is the next speaker.
Excited. Yeah, I'm here. Don't get too excited. Kick me off. Yeah. So my name is Regina. I live on Flag Street, and I am here today because, of course, as always, the City Commission finds a way to make me incredibly upset. As has been mentioned multiple times before, the City Commission has not done what it should have been doing in the first place to get public comments, which isn't surprising, because, of course, we've been building a movement where thousands of people have, you know, sent emails and have left comments. And I guess it would make sense that a city commission that would support someone like Reese Goode would go through the trouble of making sure that our voices aren't heard. So thank you for doing the very bare minimum when it comes to following the law. Happy we did not have to sue you. Obviously, I'm very upset for, besides that, I'm also pretty angry with the fact that, you know, you're continuously pushing a civilian review board, which we've mentioned multiple times before, has absolutely no teeth or accountability. We know time and time again that the police, when they investigate themselves, that they find themselves not guilty. And so that is obviously a problem. We pay these police officers. We are paying Zachary Jones, the man who murdered Michael Johnson, his salary. He's continuously employed by TPD. TPD is protecting the police officers that murdered Tony McDade and Willa Bon Woodard. They obviously don't need any of this money, especially led by killer cop himself, Lawrence Revelle, who killed George Williams with his Alpha Squad in the 1990s. Obviously, he's a racist and a murderer. And again, the city manager has decided to support someone like this. So I'm going to say things in the most clear way that I can say to politicians, which is you're not listening to the people. We're upset. We're angry. And if you see what's going on around the country in terms of removing corrupt politicians that are supported by the police, we'll make sure that you don't have your seat. Keep on ignoring the people. People like Curtis Richardson and Elaine Bryant, who is supported by the Police Beniville Association, will no longer be in office. And that goes for anyone else on this City Commission that continues to stand in the way of the people. We don't care about your Black Lives Matter sign that you put out when you still have police officers who have murdered people in the city, continuously being paid. With that, I want to say Black Lives Matter, justice for Tony McDade, justice for Michael Johnson, justice for Willa Bon Woodard, justice for Toyin. Make sure we vote out the politician. Revelle and Goode out. Revelle and Goode are out now. That's our demand, and I really hope that you heed that warning and listen to what the people have to say in our power.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Mary Rose Witherspoon. Mary Rose Witherspoon. Hearing no comment there. John Coulter. I believe John Coulter had registered on a couple of items, but may not have made a connection with this meeting. John Coulter. John Palmer, or John Say Palmer. Hearing there. The last speaker we have registered for our un-agenda portion, Mayor, is Steve Bean.
Hello. Can you hear me? Yes, can you hear me?
Good evening. We can hear you just fine. You may begin.
Excellent. Excellent. Mayor and Commissioners, hello. I'm Steve Bean. I live at 1101 Pine Street. I intended to talk only about the Police Review Board, but I do want to say that I endorse the comments of Darwin Gamble about pop-up comment and Max Epstein about danger of surge in COVID-19 that we're seeing. You've heard a lot already today about Police Review Board, including statements about police responsibility in the police killings that have happened. One of my main points, I think, is that if we don't have a truly independent review board with the power to get the facts, that leaves room for statements and beliefs about what actually happened that can't be effectively dispelled. And I'm not saying what did or didn't happen in these recent police killings. I don't know. But I do believe that there needs to be a truly independent investigation of those and every other allegation of police misconduct. Leaving the investigation of policemen's misconduct in the hands of police internal affairs departments and prosecutor-led grand juries has not worked. If you just look at the conclusion of those investigations, you'd think there was no widespread problem with police misconduct. But we know from the phone video evidence and the body camera evidence that there is a problem. Tallahassee is not immune from these problems. The police do treat young black men differently here, as I personally saw in my 28 years in the public defender's office. And obviously, as we know, people do die here at the hands of the police. We have to have confidence in the people who review what the police do. The issues I see are, first, how will the review board be chosen? Will it be appointed by the commission or elected by voters? Second, will the board have the power to demand evidence by issuing subpoenas? Or will the board have to rely on the cooperation of the city auditor or the police chief, both of whom answer to the commission, or the city manager who answers to the commission? And third, will the board have the power to investigate any complaint of police misconduct or only claims of excessive force or deadly force? On each of these issues so far, the commission has chosen the option that gives the board less independence and less power.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. What we need is a Police Review Board with more independence and more power. It's good that you're doing something, but it's important that what you do is big enough to match the bigness of the problem. Let's have a Police Review Board that has real independence and that has the power to get the facts, no matter who wants to block them. Thanks. That's my comment for today.
And Mayor, we're near the end. I'm going to ask, though, at this time, given, first of all, thank you to all of our callers and citizens who have been patient with us, both in the extended time of the meeting, as well as working out our new process. I want to make sure that we haven't missed anyone. So I'm going to, and Harold is moderating, but I'm going to ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak on un-agenda items but who has not spoken yet to speak up now, and Harold will be able to open the microphone.
Hello. I'd like to speak.
Okay. Stanley Sims, you may begin. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Stanley Sims, and I chose to speak in the unspeaking item because I didn't like the deflection that the city manager gave to a question that represented City Commissioner Curtis Richardson. um, city commissioner Curtis Richardson spoke to. I was disappointed that Mayor Pro Tem didn't address it. And I'm also interested to hear comments from city commissioner Elaine Bryant in reference to my comment. I'm gonna speak very fast. One is, I ask, just because we're suffering a budget shortfall, we got city employees at top management making beaucoup amount of money. And to say no 3% raise across the board, when we look down at the bottom of the tree, we've got city employees who are full-time employees that make less than 40, I mean, that make less than $10 an hour. I brought this to the attention of the mayor daily, pointed out my son additionally, specifically. So don't you sit up there and tell me Black Lives Matter, and we can't even get the city manager to say it. Everyone else has said it. He can't sit up there and tell me Black Lives Matter, when he, he makes smart remarks about making my child a seasonal employee. My child is not a seasonal employee. Yes, he works at a golf course. That's why he works there round the year. Commissioner Elaine Bryant, with your 20 years of HR experience and your love for black children, protect mine. Because when my seasonal employee was getting up at 6:00 in the morning to go to J. Gate Park, he was five minutes away of having a gun put in his face. His stuff robbed and his car stolen. Now, that's not a, that's not a what if, that's reality. So if you think that I'm satisfied because you done got some paint, which you didn't go do, you didn't march, the city manager didn't march, don't tell me my child life mattered. Show me in his checkbook. And it is so unfortunate that our city employees, we play take, we play take, um, terminology with their lives. Commissioners Curtis Richardson, my child can't build no house over on the South Side, making less than $10 an hour. Making less than $10 an hour, working 40 days of, uh, uh, a week, working for the government? When his city manager makes 260 grand and he don't have benefit? And yet he's a frontline employee because he's working through this COVID-19? So you tell me if black-
And, um, Mayor Commissioners, uh, we had identified early on that at that, that three-minute mark, due to the nature of the, the meeting, we would, would need to make that cutoff so that, um, I apologize to, to Mr. Sims for what, what sounded abrupt, but we had to set up our protocols in advance of the meeting. Is that in the public portion of unengaged items? Yes, sir. Do we have any other speakers? No, sir. Wonderful. Let's move into commission discussion and sharing of ideas. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, uh, take this time to say thank you to Elizabeth Emmanuel, Katrina Tugerson, for reaching out to, uh, to me and, uh, making a suggestion. They were the spark. And I took it to the city manager. You know, you can say a lot of things. You say what you want to say about people because you, you, you know, you feel a certain kind of way or whatever. You're entitled to feel the way you want to feel. But I took it to the city manager and, um, with, with, with great thought and consideration, he worked with his staff and a location was determined as to where to commemorate the Black Lives Matter movement. I think that it is important, as I've said to the, to the media, it is important that we not let this opportunity, this moment in history pass this city by. This is a historic city with our own set of issues and concerns. But we cannot sit idly by and not be a part of this history. It is unfortunate that members of our community don't understand the heart, the soul of this commission and the people on it and the staff that does this work. It is unfortunate, but no matter what, my grandmama used to always say, you're not gonna please everybody. So you do the best you can because God has the record. And, uh, if God comes in and does public comment and says to, says to me, uh, says to others, I'm not pleased with your work, then we gotta, you know, we got a problem. But I want to thank the city manager, the communications director, and all who came up with the design, uh, contracted to get the, the stencil, uh, to be able to do this work. I want to thank, uh, Renetta and her folks for being out there, uh, in the rain, uh, painting this sign and putting it out there. I'm getting all kinds of positive comments, but we're also getting negative comments. But that's okay, because we don't expect everybody to understand and we don't expect everybody to agree. And I'm also hearing that it's more than putting paint on the ground. I invited people to listen to this meeting, to attend this meeting, so you could be educated on what we are trying to move this city forward on, what we are trying to do. We know it's more than just paintings on the ground. There's a lot of work that has gone on and a lot of work to be done to, uh, move this city forward. I would hope that we will come together, those who want to come together, and let's move this city forward. So I want to say to, uh, Renetta, uh, your Public Works, uh, Wayne, um, uh, Deputy City Manager Barber, um, Assistant City Manager Raul, everybody who played a role. Cassandra Dennis, Jim, everybody who played a role in this. This is historic. We got people who are on Facebook saying, I love Tallahassee, my hometown. There are people who are very proud of this. And there are people from around the country chiming in on what we're doing in Tallahassee. And let me just say, for those who, who, who may not know, that spot that was selected, to me, is very symbolic of how we bring all sides of Tallahassee together. FAMU and South Side from the South, uh, the West Side, TCC, Florida State from the West, uh, French Town, Griffin Heights, the Lauren, Oxbottom, whoever wants to come from the North, and those from the East, and those of us from downtown to that spot. And may it forever be a symbol that others who have been left behind, who may have felt like, don't feel like they've been left behind, let them know, we see you, we know, we know you're here, and we're doing our very best to, to, to provide services to you. Are we perfect? Heck, no. The perfect one was killed. And, and, and so I don't expect, uh, perfection, because that, that's a setup. I just want to say thank you. And I want to say thank you to the, to the residents who understand, the residents who keep up, the residents who positively provide information, even those who negatively provide information. Because I'm hoping that in these hard conversations that we're gonna, we're having about institutional and systemic racism around the globe, I'm hoping that in Tallahassee, we become the leaders. And name-calling is not gonna get us there. And, uh, demands that, um, are not gonna get us there. We're gonna have to come together and collaboratively work together. So I wanna, I wanna say thank you. Thank you for taking that, that, that idea. Thank you for taking a, a, a dream, making it a possibility, so that those who will come behind us will know what we mean by these, these, these rocks, by this, this, this center of, 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 of this, uh, this university, what, what we mean by that. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, and then I'm gonna stop. You cannot expect the city commission to create something and not be a part of it. That's like saying to me, I want you to give birth, but I don't want you to get pregnant. There is no way for the city of Tallahassee commission to create an independent elected body to do the work that we were elected to do. We are the elected body. Less than two years on the job, and already we're not trusted. But now by George, I'm gonna keep working, because those who sent me here to do the work believe that we can get it done, and we're gonna get it done. And, but we're not gonna break the law. So what we've done is we've tried to provide a question and answer based on the current laws on the books about what this citizen review board, um, can look like. We've looked around the state of Florida. We've looked around the country, and I have found nowhere, nowhere, Madam Attorney, nowhere, where there is an elected citizen review board outside of the commission. Everywhere I've looked, either the commission appointed him, the mayor appointed him, or the city manager appointed him. But in every case, the chief of police was not hired and fired by these groups. Now, I'll say this, if you have something that we missed, and we looked around the country and talked to some experts, if you have something, not emotion, but some facts, some solid stuff, send it to us. Send us something that we can work with. Otherwise, in the question and answer that was sent out, the city attorney provided information on how to do what you're asking to do. But it's gonna require you to take it to the citizens to do it. And, um, and, and at this juncture, we are where we are for such a time as this. And I, I live in this community, I love this community, I've worked hard in this community without title and without pay. And if you take the amount of hours that we work, that we do this work, and, um, divided, you know, $40,000 a year to do the work that we do, I bet you, we're not making $12 an hour. I bet you, I'm not making $12 an hour. But I'm gonna do the job, because I asked to be elected, and by George, I'm gonna do it until somebody unelect me. And I'm not, I'm not intimidated, I'm not scared of being threatened by that, because I'm gonna work until I can do it no more. I don't need a title or, or money to do the work that needs to be done. So that doesn't, that, I'm not, I'm not, you know, that doesn't scare me, because I'm gonna do the work. So I just want to say that. I don't know if it's politically correct, but as a citizen who works for the citizens, that's how I feel. And if anyone has any, any concerns about that, anyone has any questions or want to have further dialogue, you know how to find me. I'm easily found. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Curtis Richardson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. The only issue that I wanted to bring up today, I had a couple of requests that we consider, um, renaming the original, the Lincoln Neighborhood Center, uh, for Mr. Freeman Lawrence. Mr. Lawrence was the last, uh, principal of the original Lincoln High School. And I talked to the, uh, city manager about that, and he was, he has gotten with Ashley to, to give us some recommendations, but I was hoping that I could get the support of the commission to have the, um, city manager consider that request to name the Lincoln Neighborhood Center, uh, for Mr. Freeman Lawrence, who was the last principal of the original Lincoln High School.
Um, Commissioner Richardson has made a motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion to, uh, have this item researched and brought back?
Uh, second and would comment.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Matlow, comment?
Uh, yeah, thank you for bringing that, Commissioner Richardson. I, you know, I, I've also been approached by, by people interested in, in different things that maybe need to be looked at and renamed, um, across the city. And I, I, I was considering, should we put together a historian group who can go out and look at different things that may be worthy of being renamed and make some recommendations of people who are worthy of, of the honor? Um, I, if, if, if that's acceptable to add on to your motion, we'll do that, or if that seems like something people want to do, um, I'll make it separately. I just wanted to put that out there.
If you could make that a separate motion, I'd like to keep this one specifically for Mr. Lawrence, if that's okay. I'll support what you're-
Uh, yeah, no, no, that's absolutely fine by me.
Okay.
Any other comments on the motion on table? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, seconded by, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner Richardson, you have the floor.
That's all I have for today, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes, I have two items. Um, the first one is to, um, commend, uh, our person who is in charge of Star Metro. I think she has worked again with, um, the administration at FAMU and, and our testing site there. And, and they have found a way to extend, um, bus service at least once a week from, uh, our neighborhoods in order for people to actually get to the testing site. We continue to hear after the first time that we did it, that they needed opportunities. And I am most appreciative that, that, that has now happened. And then the, the second probably and last thing I'll say for tonight is that I, I am so encouraged, uh, by the work of our staff in the midst of, uh, COVID-19. They continue to do an awesome job in the outreach to community and to neighborhoods. And I heard it over and over and over again tonight, that we went to the neighborhood and we received input before we made the decision. So, uh, again, we appreciate that, uh, because I think that is the way for us to move forward. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first of all, um, thank you to all of our public speakers for joining us today. Um, we know technology can be, um, difficult sometimes, but it's great to have, um, everybody back with you. Uh, Mr. Cook, I hope, um, I don't know if there's a way to streamline it and make it easier on the user end, um, but maybe if we can find a way where people don't have to call in for three hours. Um, I don't know the solution, but, but it's something to look at, just from the feedback, uh, we've heard. Um, first, um, yeah, I, I would make, uh, so I, I recognize that we can't change the name of everything, but there are things in our town probably worthy of being changed. We can't rename something for everybody, um, that deserves it, because I think there's, there's too much history in town, um, to, to really go, go down that path. But, but I do think it is appropriate. I, I know, I don't consider myself, um, a historian. I, I learn a lot from what historians bring to us, but considering, um, you know, each of the commission, appoint a member who's knowledgeable in, in Tallahassee's history, uh, to just get together and look at things and see if there's things that are appropriate to rename and, and, and possibly make suggestions, um, for, for, for this board, um, to choose from. And I, I'll make that into a motion.
I'll second that.
I, I would second it also. I'm sorry, I was muted.
Sure. Motion on table by Commissioner Matlow, seconded by, um, I give it to Commissioner Richardson since she spoke on it before.
Thank you.
Another further comment on the item? Seeing none, all those in favor, seconded by, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Commissioner Matlow, you have the floor.
Um, yeah, and, and I just want to address, um, um, the public comment issue. I, I mean, we're here, we're do, we're doing it now. I, I agree, it should have happened, happened sooner, um, but here we are. Um, the Citizens Police Accountability Council, I, I, I mean, I think it's clear where, where we are. If, if this needs to go further, I think it does have to go, um, to a ballot initiative as, um, the mayor Pro Tem, um, said. So may, maybe that's just the next logical step, uh, for the community to get together, figure out what's widely acceptable and, and, and get it on the ballot. I, I don't disagree, um, with the premise at all. Um, some hurdles are harder than other, but I, it seems like that's the, that, that's the way to get it done now. And, and, um, if that's the last resort, that, that's where I want to be able, um, to direct, um, people to. I, I, I do have, you know, I do think we needed to be better, um, with transparency and accountability. You know, there's rumors in our town, um, going around that, that, and some of our shooting body camera footage might not exist at all. And like, when there's nothing coming from us as the government telling people what's happening, um, these things can go unchecked. So I do think there is ability to provide more information, um, to the public so they can be reassured without interfering with, um, some of the recommendations. Um, Jack Campbell has, has asked to, you know, obviously not share evidence, but, um, whether, you know, there's an existence of evidence. Third, I, I do, um, uh, to Mr. Sims, uh, as a father, you're a passionate, a passionate advocate, uh, for your son. Um, and, and I just want to clarify, it are, it, in the case that he's specifically talking about golf course employees, are they considered seasonal employees with their city manager?
Yes, those positions are considered recreational aides. That's the general category that we would classify, lifeguard, other similar positions are considered seasonal, but they can work longer. They do not work full-time. Uh, they are limited to a maximum of 35 hours a week, but often work less. They are limited to a maximum of thirty-five hours a week, but often work less.
Okay, do they work year-round?
They can, but that general classification, you know, is part-time type employment.
Yeah, I understand that. I think moving forward, if we're going to tell everybody we have a twelve dollar an hour minimum wage for employees and you're working year-round, thirty hours, thirty-five hours, I wouldn't say that's seasonal. So I would say let's look at the people who truly, if they're working just the summer, you may be seasonal, lifeguard, I give that capacity. But if you're someone who's worked for the city, you know, for multiple years, because we've been having this conversation, I think, you know, the intent of the commission was to cover a twelve dollar minimum wage, really for most employees, given that TFLA may be a little more difficult, right? It's a summer youth program to provide them opportunity. And us creating jobs that don't really exist outside of that, but for the real services that the city's delivering, where people show up to work, you know, every day, put in the work, I think, you know, we should give them that same wages as everybody else. That's all I got today, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. I want to wish everybody a wonderful evening. It's been a very, very, very productive day. We've starting with the Intergovernmental Agency Budget Workshop tomorrow, then we have an intergovernmental meeting tomorrow afternoon. See you then.
Is executive session in the morning?
Oh, executive session, excuse me.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It's the executive session in the morning, that's right. Let me double-check, we have executive session at nine thirty, blueprint workshop beginning at one, and then blueprint meeting at three.
Yes.
All right, everybody, see you tomorrow. This meeting's adjourned.